Anyway, we'll get started here for our coordination meeting, which I guess we're gonna broadcast that live too. So, okay, so that's on the air. So, we are good to go. I wanted to start off just, you know, before we go over this agenda here, there was a couple of things that I was, you know, interested in bringing up, and one of them actually is Aaron's, Aaron's thing, because we had talked about this by phone earlier in the week, and it has to do with the city-county meetings. And, you know, personally, you know, I understand the logic behind those has been we're supposed to do intergovernmental coordination, but it seems like we're bashing our head against a, you know, brick wall because we're not getting a lot of cooperation, because we're not having any dialogue. And I would actually like to put that on the agenda for the next meeting, is to just say, okay, you know, when we have these meetings, what we need to have is dialogue, not debate and not arguments. And the concept of dialogue is, you know, everybody states their position, and then we see if we can work out something in the middle. And what's frustrated me is, you know, the whole business of RCPD, the law board, getting the statute changed, the budget, the garage, and whether the, you know, RCPD substation should be there. I mean, I actually wrote letters to each of the county commissioners, you know, trying to explain, okay, here's three options. Can we get together to do this? Two of them didn't even answer me. And to me, that's a problem, and if that's gonna continue, then I'm of the opinion I don't need to go to those meetings anymore, because it's a waste of my time and everybody else's. And I thought that was gonna change after the election, because, you know, we had some issues, hostility, I think, which was driven by the sales tax initiative, because it sort of messed up the county a little bit on roads and bridges, and that's something else we need to have a dialogue about. You know, how can we help them? Because I understand where they're at, and I understand we were part of the problem. But somehow or other, we gotta get, we gotta get the, you know, our two groups together, and starting first with Riley County, but also Potawatomi County, because, you know, you know, they come to them also, and we seem to get some different things there. So if you want to chime in, Aaron, I know you had some comments on this.
Yeah, so I guess my thinking is, I'm of the opinion that we, regional cooperation is important, I think, but the city-county-county meetings haven't been the, haven't fostered that in a meaningful way. And I don't know that that is, I don't, I'm not saying that they need to go away, but I think it should be something we revisit, or at least get consensus that there's a, there's a desire amongst the city-county-county to be at that meeting. And then going forward, what that, how that could be done effectively? Is an hour every month a good use of our time? Is it quarterly? Is it a longer meeting so actual things can get accomplished? Is it just an information sharing? I, I just want to look at that because of the way it's been going for, you know, the last year and even before that, when I was on the school board and just kind of, it doesn't seem like it generates a lot of action. And we have a lot of things that we do need to be working better together on in so many ways, and Pot County included in that.
I think it's, it's okay to talk about it, but, you know, Mayor Butler has been on this for 10 years. I've been on it for at least eight years, and Mark Hattasol was there before as well as Linda. But we, I do think those were important meetings. I think we've talked a lot about flooding, public transportation. That's how the stabilization center came to be. So there's a lot of information gathering, and also that's one of those times when we build those relationships. It's not about, here's the problem and here's the solution, but just updating each other, communicating with each other. And sometimes we do come to solutions, such as the stabilization center, and even with the co-responders, just a few issues. But I think the way we've been doing it has worked. It may not have worked for everything that we want it to work for. And there's always been a bit of tension, not just with Potawatomi County and Riley County, but also with Gary County and Junction City. So when we talk about the Flint Hills Regional Group, there's always a bit of friction, because it seems like Manhattan is taking over everything. And I don't blame them for that. But at the same time, I think we have fostered a really good relationship with Potawatomi County and Riley County. And I don't see a problem, we're not going to agree all the time, but that's just the nature of the issues that we have. But in my eight years here, I believe it's been more productive than not, so.
It seems like they've been more kind of, well, information sharing, and I haven't been very good about getting to them, except for on Zoom sometimes. But I think maybe if we kept it to a specific topic that we need some cooperation on and say, okay, we're gonna actually talk about this sales tax things with you guys, and we're gonna try to sit down and be helpful, and if the meeting goes unhelpfully, well, then it's like, well, we kind of tried. But I, yeah, just the having the meeting for the sake of the meeting, and oh, here's a topic we can talk about. It's not pressing. It's not something that really they need to hear, but it's, but in the effort to communicate, we do those. And so I think if we can figure out, figure out a topic, whether it's the sales tax or with the road and bridges, or whether we can, if you want to try to bring up something with the law board again, and if they keep saying, no, we don't want to change it, then we're gonna have to stop banging our head on that door, because apparently they're not interested in changing it. But, yeah, we could kind of give it the old college try on a couple or three fairly important topics. And if there's nothing that month, well, it would be nice to kind of still get together and visit with them, and since there's not too many opportunities to do that, but I think if we could, it'd be more productive if we had a specific item that both of us had an interest in trying to solve. Maybe we could, and then those might not come along too often. But I, like I say, I do understand that just getting together once a month so they can see our faces, even though they don't want to look at this face, but I think it's, there's some value, but it has been unhelpful for the most part, but maybe if, if we can kind of get a couple of topics that they should want to talk to us about and should want to give us, get an input from us on, and there's stuff that we need input from them on, let's, maybe we can try to get that narrow thing solved at least, maybe.
I'll just, you know, I agree with Commissioner Reddy, you know, you're talking about building relationships. That's why I said I'm interested in having a dialogue with them. A dialogue does not necessarily mean compromise or agreement. But it's just, you know, people have to be able to sit in the room and look you in the eye and say, this is what we are concerned about, A, B, C, D. And then the other person needs to be able to say the same thing, and then we'll see if there's any commonality there. And if there isn't, if it's just basically sorry, you know, we're both gonna go in our corners and pout, then maybe we won't get anything done. But, but, but my complaint is, we're not even having a dialogue. And we've got to bring that back up so that it happens, because things like you mentioned, the co-responder thing, you know, that worked out fine, but, you know, everybody basically had dialogue on there. Nobody was dug in. And I understand, you know, we start talking law board, that gets some, you know, some triggers going. And when you start talking about, you know, things like the roads and bridges, sales tax, but I think we've got to get our groups to sit down and help them, because I understand, they've got two years, they've got to figure it out. And if they raise their property taxes to pay for roads and bridges, that's gonna hurt the city. So it behooves us to get involved in that. And they need to lay their cards out on the table so we can help. And that's what I want to see happen. So at the next meeting, I would like that to be a topic, dialogue. And I can talk about it for a few minutes and say, here's what I'm interested in, so that when somebody, you know, sends you an email, you at least reply to it.
I would like to say something.
Sure, feel free.
I think that COVID has a kind of driven a wedge or division between, because we aren't, we don't see, for the longest time, we haven't really seen each other. And just because we're on Zoom or, you know, in these formal settings, it doesn't bode well for developing relationships. And I think we may be trying to revert back to an earlier time. But I'm not sure, and there have been issues in the last few years that have been divisive. And we've not agreed, but that doesn't mean that we quit. I mean, we're not ever going, we, the city, we, the county, we're never gonna get everything we want our way. And so those relationships that we build are connecting over time and will pay off. And that's my expectation. I don't expect to go to one of those and present a piece of paper and say, it's my way or the highway. Nobody's gonna do that. I don't see another elected body doing that, just because I, I want something. But developing those relationships, and we need to try to understand each other's positions. And the word dialogue is good, but not being forceful is not gonna work, or it'll drive people away. And so we have to, my expectation is that we have to work together. We have common goals. There are times we have to go our separate ways, and we had to do that on the sales tax. But there are so many other areas where we can work together and produce something valuable for our whole community and this whole region. And I'd like to do that with Potawatomi County, Gary County. We don't have as much opportunity. I do see Dee McKee from time to time, but I never see the other two commissioners in a context where I could really develop a relationship or know them, except in the formal, you know, on Zoom, and they're pretty far away on Zoom. So that's what I think.
I, I agree. I think the, just the reaffirmation of our purpose of that we're coming and we want to have that dialogue. We want to be willing to listen to each other. And I don't, I don't, I don't get the sense that we're unwilling. I think we have tried to have that dialogue throughout last year, and there wasn't much of it. But that's, that's what I hope doesn't continue, right? Like, that's getting that sense of the buy-in from all the stakeholders for that city-county-county, so it can be productive. And that it hasn't always been that way, but it certainly can be going forward.
Any commission, city-county, depends on the people that are elected to those positions. And when they are entrenched in a certain idea or philosophy, they may or maybe the magic will happen and the way will be clear. But other times, it just depends on who's elected in the collective sense. That's why I value the regional council, is because I actually get to see people and connect with them. And we're not talking about our parochial or our individual, you know, insisting on what we want as an individual city. I mean, we are more coming together for the benefit of the entire region and working on collective projects. And, and that's positive. That's, that's what I would like for us to have and working together, so.
I'll just add one observa, so the intergovernmental committee is a lot of information sharing and a lot of people. So a lot of what we experience at some of the city-county-county is also redone at the intergovernmental and vice versa. There's some major things that the city-county-county need to get working on together that don't really impact in a substantial way the school district or Fort Riley or K-State. But we're not, I don't know that we're using that time to tackle those issues for the city-county-county. Rather, we're just kind of redoing a version of the intergovernmental meeting. And that's, that's the, I don't, it almost feels like a duplication. So I was just wanting to maybe recommit and define what our purpose of that meeting was.
Yeah, and that's what I'd like to do with the next one, is I can do a quick presentation on the difference between dialogue, debate, and things like that. I used to teach that. It's, it's hard, it's hard to do. But we need to, we need to sit down, especially with Riley County, and the issue has got to be that, number one, roads and bridges. And then, two, there's about five different categories of RCPD things that need to be discussed. And one of them, and I, I think that that was probably shared to everybody, that the RCP director did give me a rundown, because I asked him about it at one of the previous meetings, what the cost of service was over in Pot County. And it looks like about $50,000 a year. And I know that, you know, John Ford was concerned. We started talking about RCPD budget, and this isn't fair, and we have to pay for what's over there. And dialogue would be okay. I got that, John. You know, you're worried about what the cost is there. If it's $50,000 and we're gonna adjust RCPD budget, then clearly the city should provide that to Riley County. And, but we haven't even got the discussion that far. And the same thing was true with the parking garage. I, I sent him an email and said, here's three options. The Aggieville Business District wants you to close it. They don't want a substation there, because they say it's a hassle and you're giving them a hard time. That is an option. You know, a second option is in the garage, but then how are you gonna pay for it? And they jumped to the conclusion that it was gonna cost them quarter million dollars. I don't know where they jumped to that conclusion, because we didn't say that. We haven't had a discussion on it, and they wouldn't even allow the staffs to talk about it. And so that's why, you know, I would like to, you know, we need to start at that level, and then hopefully it'll work out, and we'll end up with things like the co-responders, which Commissioner Reddy broke out, that we can get, we can get some definite, you know, results put in place.
As far as I'm concerned, Manhattan, it's okay for RCPD to cover that part of Riley, of Potawatomi County, because it's in the city, and we pay 80% of the operational costs for RCPD. That is not an issue I'm gonna go to the mat on. You know, it's just, you know, we had some county commissioners before that just plain shut down the discussion and wouldn't even talk about it and said, no, Mike Dodson's proposal at the time. And, and I, I'm not interested in making our entire relationship contentious about always talking about RCPD with them. I think that we need to start a little slower, a little softer, and work on that relationship more than just go in with the first meeting and say, here's what I want, or here's what the city wants. Because I'm not, I'm not on board with plan heavy.
That's not what dialogue is about.
Well.
You know, that's why I want to explain it, because clearly, you know, I'm not interested in going down there and saying, you know, here's what I want, but I want them to look at the statute, and there are some problems with the statute. And Mike Dodson fortunately, you know, prevented here recently, the past month, for some of the people in the legislature for forcing us to have a sheriff. And I don't know if he told you that story. I talked to him the other day about it. But they, you know, those people up there in Topeka were fixing to upset the apple cart. And so we need to, we need to come to grips with it. And I do want to have a dialogue on the budget for RCPD, because as you say, 80%, but really, we're paying 96% of operations. And I personally think we should consider changing the split on that, which we can do without state approval. But we've never had a discussion on it.
Well, that doesn't seem like we need to, I don't even know if all five of us agree on that piece. So first, we need to figure out what the five of us want before we dialogue with other people. As far as, if we're going to be a one-issue city commission to talk about law board and RCPD, we do have a law board, and they do make decisions, and there are oversight over that. But for the RCPD budget, if that is going to be an agenda item, let the five of us have a conversation before we assume we're all on the same page. And the second part to the county-county, city-county-county discussions is, we talk about dark store theory. We talk about all of these proposals by our legislators. There are so many things we talk about. I feel like the majority of our discussions are not related to law board, but flooding, all of these things. But I don't think, like, you know, we can't just go in with an agenda and say, this is what we want. And they don't have to show up, you know? Sometimes Pot County doesn't show up if they don't think the material is related to them. Sometimes we have canceled meetings because there wasn't anything pertinent that month that we needed to talk about. So it's been very flexible. I think there's always room for discussion on how we want to discuss things. But their, their commissioners change, just like our commissioners change. And we can't hold some, an entire county commission accountable because of one issue that.
And I was just using law board as an example, and that, that would not be a good discussion item to go in and just talk about the law board. You would have to break it down into about six subsets.
And the five of us need to talk about it before we even go to them.
Yeah, and that's what I mean. You'd have to say, okay, you know, what do we think about the funding? What do we think about the statute? Like, Legal, two years ago, went through and wordsmithed all the little problems in the way it's worded, and we never got that through. Now, that, that doesn't affect budget or anything. It just cleans up the language. That's a pretty simple, low-hanging fruit, but we couldn't even get that on the agenda. And I really think, you know, that, I already see articles about this sales tax thing and what the county wants to do. That would be top of my list before we go wading into any law board things, is the sales tax thing. Because if they end up putting in another sales tax to pay for roads and bridges, they could put us over 10%. I'm not an advocate of us going over 10% in sales tax. And if they raise property tax, you know, that's another issue, because that's gonna hit the city pretty hard. And so that's all I want to do. I want to see us, you know, have a discussion about dialogue and then make a list of things we would possibly like to discuss.
I think we always give topics for city-county-county discussions, so we can put that sales tax on there and talk about it. That's typically how we run the meetings anyway, isn't it? I don't understand the difference.
Well, you were just saying that unless we all agree, it shouldn't go on.
No, about law board. I said about law board. We don't even know if we agree to take, to assume that the commissioners have agreed to this. Do we have buy-in from the county is what I mean. We need to discuss those things.
Well, I can write you a list of those, and we can go over them in the coordination meeting.
But as far as topics for city-county-county, certainly we can put anything on the agenda at any given month.
I also want to say that, in my mind, the legislature has created problems between cities and counties also, throughout the state, and it's not unique to this county and this city. And so that out-of-the-left-field proposal that all counties have a sheriff is a perfect example of no legislator would ever come forward and say who they, who the author was. It just is out of left field. And as long as there are those kinds of shenanigans that cause our staffs, us, to, to, you know, what, be distracted from what we ought to be doing, it, and, you know, it, it's, it's not a clear path at all. But I do know that without relationships with these other elected officials, we won't go anywhere with our initiative. And we're not gonna get everything we want. But we need to start talking about it, just like here. We have differences of opinions. We vote, and then we go forward.
Okay, and then I wanted to change gears here real quick before we go to Ron. I talked to Ron about this before. We've got this, you know, issue with the May 16th date when the mask ordinance expires. And the city staff was concerned about, should we put it back on the agenda in case we want to extend it? And my personal opinion is, I don't want to see it back on the agenda again, unless the, unless the Riley County Health Department changes their health order and extends their mask ordinance for the county. Otherwise, it's caused enough divisiveness. Just let it, let it end, you know, May 16th. Don't put it back on the agenda. We've already put that as a, as an end date. And it looks like we're just doing crackerjacks on the vaccinations based on what the health department's done and the local pharmacies. So it takes three to put it back on the agenda, and that's really the thing I wanted to coordinate. You know, my vote is, we don't discuss it again.
I have no real interest in discussing it in April at all. It depends on what the COVID numbers are. And we could wait until like the middle of May, or the first of May before we, if we had to talk about it again. And certainly, the Health Department, the KDHE, would, would be the keeper of the numbers that we would all have to use. And so I don't have a real commitment right now, other than just making sure that our citizens are healthy. I have no idea what this variant's gonna be. Some places, it's really erupting. My son lives in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and they are on Kansas's banned list. If you go to Michigan and you don't have your shots, and you try to come back to Kansas, you have a two-week quarantine, because it's one of those red states where that variance is, has run amok. So unless that happens to Kansas again, you know, I don't know. I, I'm not, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. So I'm not, I'm not, I heard you say that before. I heard you say that when you voted this last time. I'm not gonna do this again. I am keeping the door open to the possibility that if things get bad enough, we might have to do something. But I, I hope we don't. That's, I really hope we don't.
But the point is, you know, between now and May 16th, I don't want to put it on the agenda. And if anybody wants it on the agenda, you need to say so now.
No, I don't.
We don't need to say so now. That's, that's not true.
Yes, you do, because it takes two votes to extend it. Remember, we got the two-week thing?
We wouldn't have to automatically do two readings, right? Ron?
So if we follow your current policy, and I was gonna bring it up, we don't, we won't have, Commissioner Estabrook won't be here on the 20th, which is a little early anyway. We figured about the latest you could do it would be the first meeting in May, May 4th, and then you could hold a special meeting on May 11th, which would allow us to have a publication the 15th. So, well, May 11th is the latest you could have second reading. You don't have to, but our history with this issue has been, our policy, if one commissioner wants to have two readings and notifies us of such, then that's what we follow.
Well, yeah, the problem is, is I don't suspect the county health department will issue guidance much earlier than the 12th, 13th, or 14th. I think she's probably gonna try to wait till close to the 16th before she makes her ruling as to whether to try to extend it or not. And that's the problem, is I don't, if she's gonna, I don't want us to pass something, and then on the 16th, she lets it expire. And then we're, wherever we're at at that point there. But that's the only problem I can see, is I don't want us to vote on the 11th, and on the 13th, she says, well, I don't think we need to.
And that's my, that's my point, Mark. But basically, I don't want it on the agenda unless the county health department raises a red flag and says, we need to extend this thing to July 4th. Then we can put it on the agenda and have a special meeting. But unless that happens, I don't want to deal with it anymore.
I don't mind not having it on the 20th, but I do need more information for future considerations. I don't know what the university is looking for. I don't know what USD 383 is looking at. I don't know what Fort Riley is looking at, or the health department for that matter. I don't have enough information to decide. And yes, I'm sick and tired of discussing it too. But I'm not going to have you put us in a hole right now and make a decision about something we don't have enough information about.
Well, for me, I have enough information, and that is, I'm gonna support the EOC and the health department. And if they decide it needs to be revisited, then I think we should put it on our agenda. If they don't, then we don't need to discuss it. And it's gonna take three commissioners to put it on the agenda. Now, it sounds like, you know, Linda, you would put it back on there sooner, and Commissioner Reddy, you would. Mark, the way you voted, I think you probably would be interested in not doing it. And, and I've already stated, I don't want to put it back on there unless the health department raises a red flag.
Nothing's changed since last time for me, as far as, I, I don't want it on there either. I mean, it's, unless something, and honestly, we have, Katie's gone through this with us. We have the opportunity to call a special session and do it if we have to, and have those two meetings, and if there is an emergency. But there's no need to, I don't think, plan to do it at this point, unless there is an emergency.
Okay, so I think the answer on that then, Ron, is if the health department, you know, causes a problem, we'll have a special meeting. I shouldn't say causes a problem. If the health department determines there's a problem, and we need to, we need to jump suit some hoops for public health, then we'll have a special meeting and consider it. Otherwise, the, the plan is to pursue it terminating on 16 May.
I, I don't, I don't think that's what I said. I think what I said is, I don't mind not having it on April 20th, and I need more information.
Yes, I know that, but if Commissioner Estabrook doesn't want it on there, and Commissioner Hattasol doesn't, and I don't, then it will not be on the agenda. And I appreciate your viewpoint. But, but basically, that's our process. So if three of us do not want it on the agenda, it will not be on the agenda, unless the health department decrees that there's an issue, and then we'll have a special meeting, or maybe even put it on there May 20th, if that happens between now and then. But, but the staff was concerned with the two-week thing and all that, and. But, but the staff was concerned with the two week thing and all that and, uh, and so this just resolves it. And then we don't have to, you know, have it published out there and, and there's all kinds of people still upset on both sides of this issue. And I'm ready to put it to rest and this is one way to do it.
So just for.
So on that note.
Just for clarification, um, basically, uh, let's just say that we didn't get feedback until closer to the 16th. So, you know, the Friday is the 14th, 13th. It is the Friday, the 13th, huh? That's a good one. 14th, I think, yeah. So we would not, the latest we could hold a second reading is May 11th. In order for the ordinance to be published, under the Mercury's new, they only publish legal notices three times and we have to have it to them that next day in order for it to be in the Saturday publication, the 15th. So any special meetings later than that will create a gap in, in the ordinance. Just that's, that's the, that's a challenge we'll have where you'll have a period of time where it wasn't in place.
So let me. I'm fully aware of that and I think we should inform the health department of that fact and the EOC knows that you're on the EOC, right?
Yeah, so let me give guidance to be super clear. Uh, if by that deadline, it appears that the health department or C health officer is going to want to extend the, and, and then by her extension, it would be smart for us to allow the city to extend because of the Pot County portion. That's the deadline, right? If, if that's the go pass for them, they need to make a decision by then if they want us to be able to not have a gap.
Yep, and I think EOC can coordinate that with the health department, correct?
And I think most of the businesses on the Pot County side are kind of requiring masks anyway. And so if, I don't think if it, if it takes four or five days, I think most of those businesses will just keep whatever corporate policy in place if this, if the county said, Riley County says keep a mask ordinance in place. And it takes us a week or 10 days to get the Pot County thing legal again. It doesn't mean that those companies on the east side and the Pot County side have to drop their mask ordinance. They will, can, can corporately decide they want to keep it and most of them, I suspect, probably will if, if the rest of the county is. So I don't think if there's a donut hole, so to speak, of it's in place, it's out of place, it's back in place of five to seven days or a week and a half. I don't think that's going to create a big confusion with Pot County shoppers in particular that, that it's insurmountable.
I just, I, can I just have some clarification here? Are we voting already on, on the mask mandate or are we voting on whether to have it on the agenda or not?
This is strictly whether it should go on the agenda and that's the reason I wanted to, to discuss this with the commission as a whole. They're in the coordination meeting instead of the mayor and the city manager sitting down and deciding the agenda items in private.
But, I mean, is this, are we, are we voting to have it on the agenda?
So you're doing it in private?
It goes on the agenda if three commissioners desire it to be on there.
We know that when, thank you very much.
And so I don't want to surprise anyone.
Or not, sometimes.
The way we've done that sometimes is.
City manager puts things on the agenda. We don't know when a given project is ready to be brought out in public at a, or briefing. I mean, it's not that rigid. The mayor historically ha- consults with the city manager. I'm not opposed to that informal way, um, but I'm not interested in a rigid. I'd like to move on. I think our coordination meeting is being taken up totally by this. And I don't think we have to decide it tonight or have a consensus.
That it's not going to go on the agenda tonight.
Let's get on with the rest of the meeting.
That's the point for the coordination meeting. You know, I'll, I'll give you some dialogue on that, Lyndon. I've said this before, that we have a coordination meeting and everybody's afraid to speak their mind. And it's important that we do that. And, and so what I wanted to do, I understand a lot of these things Ron puts on the agenda, i- it's fine. We're ready to deal with it, it's not an issue. But there are selected ones that we need the feedback of all the commissioners. And that was one of my goals. And that's why, you know, I asked that everybody, you know, look at this on the, on the nights we're here. Now, we don't need to discuss every single item on there.
We aren't talking about any of them.
Well, we haven't, we, we did last time. We haven't got around to it this time because I wanted to highlight these two points, which.
You did.
The business with the, uh, the, the county meeting. And the mask thing is, is one of the big things on the minds of everyone. And so I think we've got a, a plan in place where if the health department determines there's an issue between now and May 11th, we'll end up considering it as an agenda item. And if they don't, then you won't see it on the agenda again.
I think that was the problem. I think the process we have in place is typically the city would have brought it to us anyway because that's how the format works.
Timing.
And then it would just come in. But now we're like preempting the regular process of something that would have come anyway and then we would have made a decision there. Now we're discussing something that we, that would may or may not, that would have probably been on an agenda and then we would have discussed it at that time. If that's the way you want to do things, that's fine. But to say we are having some kind of dialogue and process, uh, that's inaccurate because that would have shown up anyway.
Well, the problem, okay, the, the thing is, it's three, the three commissioners agreeing to put something semi controversial on the agenda, that's standard operating procedure. So that's one of the reasons that Wynn's, uh, Thomas sign digital thing apparently has never gotten anywhere because we haven't gotten three people to say, let's get that on the agenda. We've, we've never formally did a straw vote to say, yes, I want to put that on the agenda. So it keeps never getting on the agenda. With, with this thing, yeah, if it's, if it's something uncontroversial, that no big deal, Ron puts it on the agenda and we talk about it. On something that is semi controversial, before we wade into it, we want to make sure three commissioners want to wade into it again. And I think that's, that's all this discussion is about right now. And three people have said, let's not wade into the mask ordinance issue until we have to. And it, it may create a timing issue, but if, if the county health people know that we're kind of watching them and if they could kind of give us an indication early what they're going to do, it would make our lives easier. But it's not insurmountable with special meetings and things like that, so.
That, that hits it, Mark. And as I bring it up, my point was, you know, if we wanted to say, okay, the mayor and the city manager sets the agenda, then I would have just never put it on there and you wouldn't even get your say on it. And that is why I bring it before the group in the coordination meeting, to coordinate it, because I don't want to surprise you. And all of you talk about transparency. Well, that's transparency. And if, and if four of you had said, hey, Butler, you're crazy, we're going to put it on the agenda next week, then fine, it would go on the agenda next week. That's my point. I also brought up the idea of the charter ordinance, same thing. I could have just told Ron, put the charter ordinance on there, we're going to discuss it. But I knew it was going to take four votes to make it pass. Two of you said you were absolutely against looking at the library charter ordinance, so it's not on the agenda. It is exactly the same thing. So on that note, Ron, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple other things on the planning charts. Uh, on the 20th, we're looking at, uh, starting the process review for the Manhattan Development Code. Uh, the first three articles and the plan is to get that information to you when the planning board packet goes out, uh, before this. So when they, they'll review that material first and, uh, then, uh, so it, you won't, you'll have more time to look at it as opposed to, uh, just wait until the agenda packet. Uh, also that evening, we'll have a, a strategic planning update on the public engagement process. Consent wise, uh, we've got some petitions that, uh, we're working through on some public improvements as well as, uh, uh, some phases of the North Campus Corridor. That's on North Manhattan for some of the underground electrical and the landscaping phase. Uh, we've also got North Manhattan, uh, design contract amendment for the final design of, uh, North Manhattan between Blumont and Fremont. And then, uh, uh, new CMAR agreement, uh, relative to that. A mural there at Douglas Center and, uh, looking for some feedback also on, uh, you know, we, we suspended the housing study. We had the housing study RFP out, uh, and, uh, companies were responding to it, uh, when COVID hit last year, uh, about a year ago this time. And so, uh, I guess the, the, obviously some of the updates that we've made to it is, uh, we've got a, uh, the sales tax pass that has a, uh, workforce housing component to it. So we've made that modification in the RFP, but, uh, uh, we've had obviously some of the other discussions about, uh, the Housing Advisory Board and then, uh, the Steering Committee component for, uh, uh, the Workforce Housing Initiative. And so I guess the question is, do you, would you like to relook at that RFP before we issue it again? That was, and it would likely be on either the 20th or May 4th. So that would be something to think about and give me some feedback on. Uh, May 4th then, uh, pretty short agenda right now at this point. Uh, one of the things, uh, as we look at some of the work session items and, uh, if we have some of the Manhattan Development Code items, if we look like we have, uh, light legislative meetings, we may move some of those things to the, to the night meeting instead of the work session. So just to, I think you, Mayor, so we don't have a four hour work session and we can pull up some of that time here. So that's been some of our goal with that. So, um, next week we do have some water and sewer regulatory considerations, uh, to visit with you about at the work session. And, uh, on the 27th, that's just a short update on the strategic plan like we did last time as we prepare for another round of, uh, updates, another, uh, and working towards, uh, uh, starting the budget then in, in May. Um, one of the things that we're still kind of waiting on is some, uh, guidance on the new transparency legislation for, uh, the value that, uh, the clerk has to report based on the mill levy and, and what the valuation of the community is. It sounds like, uh, some of those components will be implemented yet this calendar year. Uh, and so the date by which the clerk has to give us that value, it does look like they're going to adjust the dates from some of our budget, uh, finalization requirements so that that typically we, we're supposed to be done and have the budget approved by mid-August. Uh, it looks like we can have that public hearing now in either August or September uh, with a final budget not, not having to be approved till around the first of October. So that's a benefit to us to have more months of revenue, uh, when making the 22 budget. And so, uh, that's something that may adjust our budget calendar as we get more information back from the department administration. The governor has signed that bill, they just don't have all the, uh, how they're going to implement it, uh, worked out yet. So we look, we're looking, uh, for more information with regard to that. Lot of legislative activity going on, obviously. It's, uh, most co- conference week with, uh, um, both the House and the Senate and conference committees, uh, all week. And then they'll break at the end of this week, uh, until, uh, they come back for, to finish things up in May. So they'll be out about four weeks after this week. So I think in your mail folder, this was the latest, uh, few slides I put together on the American Rescue Plan. Based on the information I'm hearing, uh, we're probably not going to get, uh, treasury guidance and our first round payment until, uh, probably early May, which is, they're, the word is, is they're taking as much time. And I know the National League of Cities to try and get good set of guidelines out that, you know, one of the things we, with the CARES Act is we were constantly getting, uh, new information about requirements and, and so on and so forth. So, uh, more to come. Um, I'm on a weekly call that, uh, with and through the National League of Cities, that's, uh, they're doing a good job on our behalf. It's good, good time to have a membership with them, uh, and they're working hard for us, so more to come on that. Uh, I will be, uh, over a meeting with the Potawatomi County Commission, uh, uh, next Monday on the 12th and, uh, for my every other month visit with them. And I just did meet with Riley County and I think I put some notes in your mail folder on some of the topics I, I met with that. So that's all I've got, Mayor.
You're having good dialogue with Potawatomi County on the bridge, right?
Oh, I think most of it's talking about incorporation these days.
Yeah, that's, and that, that's something else that we probably ought to put on that list of, you know, because that's got a lot of people, uh, you know, they got, uh, concerns about that.
Yep.
So have you got anything for us?
The only thing I have is a, a date to maybe look ahead to. We're eyeing June 25th, it's a Friday, as our kind of final strategic plan retreat with our consultants. We're looking at, out at the schedule and, uh, that 24th on Thursday, our consultants will be in town for the, the last, um, committee meeting with our community committee and staff technical committee. So we're trying to see if maybe we can do that city commission retreat with the strategic plan on the 25th. So take a look at your calendars, I know it's a few months out, but we wanted to get that in front of you in case there are any objections or conflicts with that. Then we can certainly reschedule.
You're good, if you send that out, that'd be excellent. They're going to, we're going to be able to physically be in the room with them this time instead of.
Yep.
Excellent.
You said June or July?
June 25th.
That'd be good. Jason, you're good? Okay, we'll go in different order this time, we'll start with Linda.
I, I did have a question, Jared. Um, when we, on our e-scooter, uh, contract with Link, um, what is the 20? I know that we get 25 percent, or 25 cents, but it's 25 cents every ride or every minute? Or what, what is the, uh, what's it tied to?
It's 25 cents per ride. So anytime someone rents a scooter and unlocks it, uh, we get 25 cents. I believe it's a dollar to unlock. And then it's 25 cents per minute that they ride.
Right.
Is the rules right now. But yeah, anytime it's unlocked, so in March, for example, I just looked at our data, there's about 7,000 rides. So 7,000, 25% of that is kind of the, the makeup of what you get.
Yeah, and, and that does go in the city university fund, right?
Yep, and we put all that into the city university fund. I could get a report too of ridership if you'd like. Um, it was pretty low during the cold months, but it's ramping back up. I just had a coordination call with Link today actually and they're, they're ramping up to about a average of 300 scooters across the community.
They are, they are collecting sales tax also, right?
They are, yeah, they did, they did change that.
So some of that goes in the general fund and that was a chance.
Each charge does collect the sales tax as well.
So is that something you put in the city manager's report that's issued every month? That would be a good addition.
We can, yeah. And I, I get a monthly report from. I get a monthly report from them as well if you'd like me to provide that separately or I, we, we can, I'll ta- talk with Ron about however to get that information to you.
I figure you get a lot more detail than we need. Is that true?
I get a lot of detail from them about everything going on, so.
I was just.
But it's good.
Some general information. I did notice in the Topeka paper that Topeka is, is signing a contract with Link also for e-scooters. And their negotiated price is 15 cents. So I think our administration did a pretty good job there. So wanted to call attention to that. Uh, and I don't know that I have anything, we don't have time, so, um, please go on.
I don't have anything other than looking at the, uh, work session agenda. Um, August 24th, um, I'm going to be gone. It's the Motley Crue, Def Leppard, Poison, Joan Jett concert at Kaufman Stadium that I was supposed to go to last summer up in Minneapolis-St. Paul. And so I don't know if you want to flip the 10th and the 24th or you guys just talk about the 60% design of the airport without me. But I will be gone that 24th. That's it.
Um, the ATA has some, we, well, we meet in two days, uh, or we meet tomorrow, I guess. Um, but they are looking for drivers, uh, of course. And they are, um, working through, getting that feedback about what the, the federal, um, money might come to them, but not a lot of news other than that.
You know, that raises something, Erin. Um, twice this week, people have reported to me that several of the drive-in restaurants have their dining area closed and they're saying that they can't attract enough employees to open it up, so they're only opening the dining. I'm, I'm sorry, the drive-up, yeah. And so I.
And so, I don't know how extensive that is, but that's, I know of two restaurants, two drive-up restaurants in town where that is the case. Arby's on the east side, and I don't know where, and what's the other one? Oh, the Dairy Queens, I think, are the same way. And I don't know about any others, but I'm kind of on the lookout for information, so we need to be aware.
Yeah, I was talking to some of the folks at Florence. They've got 40 job vacancies, starting at 1350 an hour going up to 2150. They can't fill, and they're, you know, one of their vice presidents told me the reason is that in Kansas right now, according to his charts, you can get $778 a week for not working. That makes it a little bit difficult, and that is a problem with trying to get this economy jump-started. And that's pretty sad when, like you're right, you just go through the, you know, the drive-through. You can't go inside the restaurant itself.
We had our Community-K-State meeting, usually at Mondays at 1:30. Because of the numbers being, doing so well, the EOC is stepping away a little bit and leaving all the vaccine operations to RCHD. We're moving our meetings to every other week as opposed to every week, so that's a good sign. I think, I appreciate the information on the American Rescue Plan and the money or the funds that might be coming our way and how they're going to come. I know it's an ongoing process, but I do appreciate the continuous information coming forth, because we have a lot of budget discussions that we will be having, and I don't understand about 2024 and what comes before all of that and how to utilize those funds. And I'm glad we're working on that piece of it. The Race and Reconciliation Community Forum was very well-done and very well-attended, good conversations. I thought the breakout rooms worked out well, so it was good to be a part of that. The dark store theory keeps coming up wherever I go, almost all the people are discussing it. I'm going to be talking to Greg McHenry here soon enough to get more details. And also, I don't know enough about this new appointee that they're, that they're discussing, the Senate is discussing. First name is Kirsten, but I don't remember her last name, and I don't know if it happened or not. But Representative Dodson had sent out his newsletter, and there were several bills that were of interest, and I just wanted to know if our staff can provide information or look into them a little bit deeper. One of them is H, and it said substitute SB 124 about expanding star bonds and adding rural development projects, but also keeping that metropolitan, I'm sorry, is it micropolitan? Statistical areas to 50,100. I just want to know what that means for the city of Manhattan, because he did reference Manhattan, but I didn't have enough time to dive in deeper into that, what he was talking about, to get more information about that. There was also SB 118 providing for dissolution of special districts and assumption of responsibilities by city or county. Again, I don't know what those means. There's just a bunch of words put together, and I wasn't sure what all of that meant. And HB 2417, allowing clubs and drinking establishment to sell cereal malt beverage for consumption for licensed, off-licensed premises. So, I don't know if that means just walking around anywhere with a can of beer or what it means. So, I just need more information about that and what that might mean for the city. Other than that, I appreciate the agenda being sent out for the Recovery Task Force this Thursday. Thank you.
Just to follow up your comment about the restaurants, I know the guy that was the regional, Carlos O'Kelly's guy, and they said, is everybody pretty excited about getting full capacity back? And they say no, because they scaled their staff back to a 25% capacity in carryout and stuff. And that's exactly the problem. They, it's going to, every restaurant now is looking to hire, and if you can get 775 or whatever, you can get 20 bucks an hour if they're not working with the boost from the feds. That's going to create a real employment issue. My wife just texted me and said that they're having trouble getting people at the lab, and they start at 15 and something an hour and give you full health insurance.
I read an article that that's happening nationally. It's, I mean, so it's not just an issue right here, but all over the country as the economy kind of starts rubbing up a bit, that there's a shortage of people to work.
Okay, I guess we've got five minutes before we start the legislative meetings to take a quick break. Are we, Jared, are we live on there so we can get started? Okay, it's 7:00 PM, so we need to start the meeting. So, welcome to the Manhattan City Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Please join me in the privilege of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the Father of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this being the first meeting of the month, we have open public comments on any topic that is not on the agenda tonight. We did not receive any comments by email on that, but we'll take any in-person comments if anybody wishes to speak tonight. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close general public comments, and we'll go to Commissioner comments, and we can begin with Commissioner Ready.
Thank you. I do want to just announce that on February 22nd, there is a Fair Housing webinar at 8:00 AM. I highly suggest.
April?
Sorry?
April.
What did I say?
You said February.
Nope, not February. April 22nd, sorry about that. At 8:00 AM, I highly suggest anybody who's going to be buying a house or renting, whatever it might be, to at least watch the webinar and participate. I believe it'll be recorded so you can see it again. But it's a good time to look at what codes look like, what rights, tenants' rights, landlord rights, and contracts and such. Good discussions, and this is something the city puts on annually and probably twice a year, I think, I'm not sure. But it's certainly something I highly recommend everybody attend. The other thing is April 10th, we are doing, I'm part of a Rotary Club called Rotary Action Against Human Trafficking. We are having a human trafficking summit, Educator's Role in Preventing Human Trafficking, and we have panelists. It's a virtual summit. You do need to require, registration is required, but it's a free event. If you are interested in any of this as far as our schools and educators and human trafficking, I, please pass the information to others and register, and I think there's a lot of activity going on in our community as well. Kansas is one of those hubs where a lot of human trafficking does happen. And because of a human trafficking conference that Commissioner Morris and I attended, we were able to look a little bit closer at our massage therapy licensing policies and put those in place. So, there's a lot of work to be done, and hopefully you all can participate at some level. Thank you.
I'll just add that it's, in addition to the Fair Housing webinar, it is Fair Housing Month, and so, there'll be other activities to kind of check out, and that's, it's the 53rd anniversary of the Fair Housing Act being passed, and that's where that comes from. But that is all I have.
Okay, Mark?
I got nothing.
Nothing? Linda?
Yeah, I just would like to mention that April 8th to the 10th is when K-State is hosting their annual open house. This year, it's going to be virtual, and so, there's an article in tonight's paper that gives you the URL, so you can check it out. But if every one of us made a commitment to recruit a new K-State student for fall semester, it would be a good thing. So, let me see, let me just make that pitch. The, well, I think that's all. Thank you.
I just want to mention three things again that I think would be helpful for anyone out there listening. The city website has a couple of interesting features on it, which I think you can capitalize on, and many people are concerned about all those orange traffic cones out there. And you can sign up for a newsletter called In the Zone. It'll keep you updated to the various changes when a road closes or, you know, a detour's in place, you're not surprised. And I would recommend that you do that, and it'll show up on your email, and it's very easy to use. At the same time you do that, you can sign up to get the City Insider newsletter, which will keep you informed of all kinds of interesting things. Comes out about every two weeks, and that's a great program. And then, the last one is, just about everybody has a cell phone these days, you know, load the Reported app on it, and when you get irritated because there's a pothole or a tree limb or something, you can take a picture of it and use the Reported app to report the item to the city. Now, here's the advantage to that. I get a number of emails every week where somebody will report something they want me to take care of, and it actually will get done faster if you do it through the Reported app. Because if I find a pothole and I send it to Commissioner Esterbrook and say, Aaron, please fix this pothole, he ends up passing it to somebody else in the city. It's going to take two days to get to the guy with the shovel and the asphalt. But if you use the Reported app, it goes straight to him, and that guy with the shovel and the asphalt is going to get the job done, not necessarily a commissioner. We're going to be pushing pieces of paper around to get it to the workers, the public worst guys that make a difference. And I've used that thing a number of times the past year. In fact, when people sent me emails and said I got a problem with a tree, I just went there, took a picture of it, put it on the Reported app, forestry took care of it within 48 hours. And so, it's an excellent resource, and we've even expanded it to include your ability to report problems with e-scooters, which it goes right to the e-scooter folks and doesn't even trouble city staff, because we don't control that anyway. So, please make use of that, because I'll tell you, it saves time and it saves money for the city. It's a very effective tool. So, next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the Consent Agenda items?
Yes, this is Linda Morris. Item E is the item about the parking garage, and I have two questions that I want to ask before I, I don't want to move it to the, off the agenda, but I just thought I'd take this opportunity. Talking about the contingency fee, there's a $45,000 contingency fee, and of the $338,000 total, if that $45,000 is not spent, because it doesn't have to be, what happens to that money?
That contract would just be at the total that it would, minus the $45,000 out of the $335,000. So, it would be under $300,000.
Okay.
We actually anticipate it will be. The 45 grand is really.
Just in case.
An in-case scenario that if they uncover something when they're removing all the fixtures, that they would have to actually replace some existing. So, it's a good question, and we, the bid actually came in under 300.
Okay.
Yep.
And when, I wanted to ask when the new equipment would be operational? And I see on one place that it would be August 2021, this fall.
So, the scope of this is the fixtures.
Yeah.
Which will replace the lights and the security cameras.
Uh-huh.
So, it does not address any of the gates or entry-exit type of infrastructure.
Okay. Lights and cameras only, huh?
Correct, but it'll be by around August 1st.
Okay. All right, good. And the new solution for lighting is going to be a durable kind of solution?
Yeah, our city electrician, Dennis Nelson, has been instrumental in leading this, and something that he and Casey Smithson, who have both spent a lot of hours in our garage. We have a security issue right now, and we have a, just a, it's unsafe.
It's dark in there.
It's extremely dark.
In one or two places.
And we, we have a fixture that is no longer serviceable, and we have tried to coordinate this effort with the selection of a fixture in the garage in Aggieville, so we have a consistency. But I have to give credit to Dennis and Casey for the amount of time, effort, and energy they've spent with this, and obviously, Walker has assisted us, and now McCown Gordon. So, yes, we're trying to create a safer, more secure environment.
Because I think the ones that were there when it was brand-new, they were flashy and sparkly, and, but they didn't last.
They didn't. They didn't. We had an inferior product.
And the new solution for lighting is going to be a durable kind of solution?
Yeah, our, our city electrician, Dennis Nelson, has been instrumental in leading this, and something that he and Casey Smithson, who are, who have both spent a lot of hours in our garage. We have a security issue right now, and we have a, just a, it's unsafe.
It's dark in there.
It's extremely dark. And we-
One or two places.
We have a fixture that is no longer serviceable, and we have tried to coordinate this effort with the selection of a fixture in the garage in Aggieville, so we have a consistency. But I, I have to give credit to Dennis and Casey for the amount of time, effort, and energy they've spent with this, and obviously Walker has assisted us, and now McCown Gordon. So, yes, we're trying to create a safer, more secure environment.
Because I think the ones that were there when it was brand-new, they were flashy and sparkly, and, but they didn't last.
They didn't. They didn't. We had an inferior product, and we're, we're making amends.
I'm very supportive of the security aspect, the cameras, and I hope we buy a durable kind that won't just be destroyed by somebody that doesn't want to be seen, but I, we have to, uh, there's a safety issue with the lighting too, and for anybody using the garage. So, thank you, I appreciate your answering the question.
Jason, while you're there, Commissioner Hattasol here. There's not going to be ongoing monitoring by anybody. It's going to tape it, and if we need to go back and look at it, someone will look at it. We're not hiring somebody to sit there and stare at cameras 24/7.
Correct, and, and we'll work with Brad at the Hilton as well. You know, if there's some, something necessary that they need. We do see a lot of damage, we see a lot of behavior. I know RCPD, when, when Director Butler's talked to us about this, you know, we, we need to put something in place. There, there are behaviors going on in that garage that we need to monitor and be able to react to.
Thank you, Jason, I appreciate it.
Yvette?
Mayor, I'd like to move the item on the Board Appointments, which is item, the Consent Item H, the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board item, I'd like to move it to the end of the agenda.
You have the ability to do that?
I, I guess while we're at it, we'll move, uh, the, sorry, I'm turning the page. The Housing Advisory Board Appointment to the end as well. I will step out for that.
Item H3?
Well, it's the second item on the page that is Item H.
Yes, we're talking to move Item H1 to the end, and Item H3 to the end.
Correct.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay. With that-
All right. Any other Commissioner comments?
Mayor, I move that we approve a Consent Agenda, except-
One, I need to, I need to do one formal thing, which is, we didn't receive any public comments by mail or email. Is there anyone that would, would like to make in-person comments on the Consent Agenda items? Okay, seeing none, then we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda, except move Item H1 and H3 to the end of the General Agenda.
Second?
Okay, City Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Esterbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider vacating a section of right-of-way for Fourth Street, and the presenter on that is supposed to be Ben Kearns from Public Works. And there he is.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Let me go ahead and get this brought up here. Okay. For us, we have a request to vacate right-of-way South Fourth Street. Quick history on that. The right-of-way has been in effect since 1858, and it was part of the original layout of the town. The applicant has requested this vacation for 407 Potawatomi Avenue to provide additional parking for future structures. This image here, let me orientate you real quick. This is Potawatomi, here's South Fourth Street. This is the levee, linear trail going over it. The rectangle that you see is the actual right-of-way being requested to vacate, and it is 60 feet across here. If the vacate is approved, what will happen is 30 feet of that right-of-way will go to the property owner located at 407 Potawatomi. The 30 to the east will go to the city. No utilities are currently in the right-of-way, that's to be vacated. All utilities have responded to the request to vacate the easement, and all responses have supported the vacation.
Go back a picture, Ben, to the-
Yes.
That one.
Yes.
So, the, the city owns that parcel south where all those cars are parked?
Correct, this is a part of one of our parks. It's the one that's south of the viaduct. I apologize, I forgot the name of the park.
It's just a open green space, apparently?
It parallels the river.
Okay.
It's attached to the parkland on the other side of the levee.
Oh.
On the riverside. It's all one big parcel.
Didn't realize it was a park.
I've not been there before, so, okay.
Well, I looked at it, but I never real, I didn't know what it was. A park, okay. Parkland.
Okay. Possible motion is, uh, if you find that no private rights will be injured or endangered to the proposed vacation, that the public will suffer no or inconvenience thereby, approve ordinance, number, let's see if I can get that, whoops. Apologize. Vacating a right-of-way in South Fourth Street, South Potawatomi Avenue. Any questions?
You know, seems pretty, pretty clear, it's a, just a, a road that no one is going to use, and it probably needs to go away, but we need to conduct a public hearing, so the public hearing period is, is now open. If there's anyone that wishes to speak on this, please come up to the microphone. Okay, I don't see anyone. Well, we did receive one public comment regarding the public hearing, but it was actually about recreation fees, and wasn't really relevant to this, but it was submitted under that, so I need to mention that. So, if there's no more public comments on this, then we can say the public hearing period is closed. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Okay, seeing none, we can entertain the possible motion.
Mayor, I move that the commission find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by the proposed vacation, and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby, and approve ordinance number 7534, vacating a right-of-way for South Fourth Street, south of Potawatomi Avenue.
Second, that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so, City Clerk Brenda Wolf, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Esterbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, then we'll move on to the General Agenda. And the first item on the General Agenda is Consider Resolution Number 040621B, Setting Fees and Other Policies for Parks and Recreation Program Facilities, Rentals, Admissions, and Membership, and the Director of Parks and Recreation, Eddie Estes, will take the lead on this one. Thank you. Yvette? Let's see.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Eddie Estes, the Director of Parks and Recreation. We've had a bit of this discussion previously, a work session last year, as well as in a presentation and a work session, we, we talked about new facility rental fees, and that we would be bringing this discussion back to you to, at a later time. I think that was in January. We talked about potentially some reduction of services, and we referred to new facility rental fees, and referred back to cost recovery and setting fees administratively. So, tonight, we have three primary points of discussion, and that is to increase cost recovery for program fees, or to leave as they currently are listed in the resolution, to set program fees administratively, or to continue with program fees listed in the resolution, and the third item is to approve new facility rental fees as proposed, that was included within your packet, or do you recommend changes, you know, to those fees from what we've presented? If you recall, March 22nd, Ordinance Number 7529 was approved, which allows fees to be set administratively, but I want to point out only if you approve a resolution that has that language granting that authority. That was a first action that occurred in March. The draft resolution that I included in your packet has language in it to allow fees to be set administratively, and has language to increase cost recovery, as well as the proposed new facility rental fees. That's included in your packet, but I just want to point out, if you do not want to increase cost recovery, if you don't want to consider setting fees administratively, or any potential alterations to those rental fees, we will make those adjustments, and we will bring that resolution back to you for final approval at a later meeting. Randy Clifford, our Director of Recreation, is going to cover our cost recovery that we have currently in place, as well as our program fees that we currently have in, in place, history, so you can see how we've increased fees over the years, and he'll cover new facility rental fees. Unless you have any other questions for me at this time, I'm going to step out of the way and let Randy walk through that, and I'll come back up to help address any questions that you might have. Okay?
Ed, hi, I do have a question. As a result of the Parks and Recreation Board meeting yesterday, is there any change to the material that we were given, which we had read yesterday or Friday? It's still the same?
No.
No?
We've met several times with the Park and Rec Advisory Board-
Right.
I'm sorry, is this one better? As well as with the, the Douglas Center Advisory Board. I gave them the heads-up yesterday, that, of course, we're meeting, we talked about that at our last meeting. I represented in the memo that I prepared for you all, the Park and Rec Advisory Board's sentiment, as well as their recommendation for fees, and the Douglas Center recommend, when I say fees, per rental fee, and the Douglas Center recommendation for rental fee. And it's also how we came up with one set fee that's somewhat in the middle of there, as I indicated in the memo, to keep things as simple as we can, and to provide consistency with all those facilities, which we feel is very important. That's what we came up with the recommendation that we made. So, I wanted to make sure that I did represent to you all the position, the recommendation that the Park and Recreation Advisory Board had made.
I know that they met last night.
Yes.
And I was asking if anything changed as a result of that meeting from the material that you developed late last week, and you're saying no, so, okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you. Randy Clifford.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Randy Clifford, Director of Recreation. Happy to come back to you this evening and speak about this topic that we have touched on before. A little bit of background information, as Eddie kind of led into, you know, fees for various programs, admissions, rentals are set by the Commission's fee resolution. It's been our past practice. Currently, as the resolution stands now, we've been directed to recover 110% of direct costs in adult program activity fees, and 100% of direct costs in the youth program, senior programs, and adult special population activity fees. And then there are some set fees that are in the resolutions that the Discovery Center and Sunset Zoo follow. As, as noted here, there are specific fees that are listed in all the resolutions tied to a lot of the services we provide, so, facility rental fees, admissions to some of our different facilities, like water parks, and the, the other facilities that have a, a fee structure in place, and so, those are all kind of a part of that resolution that you've seen. We talked a little about cost recovery and, and setting fees administratively, want to be clear on this, that that would be only with our program fees. Not admission fees, rental fees, membership fees, all those admission fees and rental fees, membership that are listed in the resolution will continue to be in the resolution, they're not affected by the cost recovery or the, or setting those administratively. So, we're really focusing on the program fees as this discussion is centered on, on cost recovery and setting fees administratively, it's, it's about program fees. In Recreation, it kind of talks about just examples of some of the different types of programs that will be included with that. Adult programming, youth programming, our lifelong program for the seniors, special communities, which is for special populations, clients, and so, and then some examples of some of the types of programs that Sunset Zoo and the Discovery Center as well. So, again, just to make sure we're clear on that, is a focus on program fees only that we're talking about for this, this change in the approach. When we talk about cost recovery and the types of costs that go into the direct or actual cost of programs, here's some, some examples of what that means. The seasonal staffing cost, so, the staff that we hire to, to run those programs, instructors, the leaders, the esports officials, as the case may be for the different programs. The program materials, the equipment that are needed to deliver that program, transportation costs, if it's a trip or a tour, or if it's tied to our, our day camp program, and some of their field trips in the summer, for example. Special fees, such as any processing fees or admission tickets that are, again, directly related to the, the program. Again, just those things are directly assigned to a specific program, and those costs are what we are talking about, and we're speaking of cost recovery. And we just included, there was a, a more extensive chart that was included in your, in the packet, but we just included some of the, what you call base programs that have typically, typically been listed in the resolution in the past. You can see what the current fees are, and then what different levels of cost recovery would do with those fees. And that is, we're proposing the, the 10% increase, and so, that, you can kind of see what that would do if you were looking at a little more significant increase in cost recovery, then you can see examples of what that would do with fees as well. So, at the, at the level that we're recommending with a 10% increase across the board, it is not a significant, you know, increase, and really somewhat mirrors some of our past program fee increases that we've had, as we've kind of looked at that history. What we've done in the past is tried to increase fees about 10 to 50% over three to five years, and just in, in an effort to maintain that consistent cost recovery, and to keep par with what's now stated in the current resolution, in terms of maintaining cost recovery goals, and also just kind of keeping up with increasing costs in programs that occur. And I'll just give you a, a little bit of a snapshot here, some of the past fee increases that we've had, and you can see what's dating back almost, almost a 20-year history now, starting back in November 2003, and then about a six-year span before we had an increase in 2009. And you see that often the $5 increases are fairly typical. Again, in December 2013 and 2016, and again, you see $5 kind of across-the-board type of increase. And then, more, more recently, in December 2018, which was effective in, in the, in March of 19, a $5 increase in rec program fees, and a $10 increase in some adults' 14 entry fees, and then some specific increases in selected programs for cost recovery adjustments, programs that maybe weren't performing at the level they should for cost recovery, and so they were adjusted a little bit more in order to meet those goals. And then most recently, in November of 2019, just, we hadn't adjusted ice shrink admissions for a while, and so there was an adjustment made there as well. So, when it comes to cost recovery, again, looking at, at a, for example, a $40 kind of base rate for a lot of youth programs, 10% increase there takes it to $44. 10% increase there takes it to $44. There really isn't anything more significant than what we have typically done with some of our past increases. And I want to make sure, make that point, that it's not a, it's not a big jump to apply a percentage increase of 10%, as opposed to some of the kind of dollar amount increases we've had in the past. So just shifting gears a little bit to the rec center fees. What we talked about, and we gave you a little more detailed chart that showed some of those proposed fees. But there was discussion about, at a previous Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, about what other facilities, similar facilities, were doing with those fees. And we saw in locations such as Slina, Lawrence, Gardner, that had similar type facilities, like our new ones that are coming online, that they range from about $35 to $65 per hour. We had some discussion with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and they were looking at a range from about 35 to 45 per hour. The Douglas Advisory Board recommended 50 per hour for kind of that standard base hourly court rental. And so we tried to come up with a, an amount that was kind of somewhere in the middle, and consistent among all of our centers in our inventory that will be coming online, along with the Douglas that's already open. And then kind of falls within the range of some other communities as well. And so that was the basis for coming up with that number, and we felt that was a good place to land for us to start. Another aspect of that discussion with the advisory board was talking about what, and some other communities are doing this as well, in terms of providing a little bit of, of a discounting mechanism for the all-day or weekend rentals that would host tournaments or large events. And so instead of having them pay that hourly rate, you have a kind of a, a price that's determined for total hours of use for the, for a weekend. And they could, we were looking at anything that ranged from about $1,000 to $2,500, with $2,500 being the amount that you would pay for basically, as noted there, kind of two days, all the courts from eight to eight, and would be kind of our maximum weekend rental rate, plus any add-on fees. And there were, you know, some other incidental fees that could be added, depending on some of the components of their particular rental. And again, we felt like, looking at what other communities were doing, and how they were structuring those tournament rates for, primarily for the events and weekends, that we would be fitting kind of within that range as well. There was a range from about, anywhere from $1,100 to, to the $36.75 number. So we felt like we landed a good spot there, something that would be competitive for us. And so we would have the opportunity to recruit a few events to come to our community, and perhaps host those in our, our new facilities, because we are going to have some, you know, a good inventory of gyms now available.
Randy had us all here. So I'm curious, on the $45 an hour, does that get you one court, or does that get you the whole facility? Because $45 an hour into $2,500 for the weekend, that's like 50 hours that they're getting charged at $45 an hour for to get to $2,500. So I was curious, is the, what's that, what's the disconnect I don't get there?
The $45 an hour is per court.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you get, you may be getting four courts?
Yeah, and that $2,500 would be, if you're using all four courts, we say all courts, that's four courts per facility.
12 hours a day?
Yeah, 12 hours a day for two days, so.
It becomes a bargain then.
It's a discount, yes. And we felt like that was important, because it would allow us, and working a little bit with CDB, and, and, you know, hoping to promote some sports tourism, bringing some new events to our community, wanted to be competitive in that arena as well. So, kind of want to bring it back to those decision points. Cost recovery increased or remained the same, and again, emphasizing this is only for program fees. And one of the reasons, I did want to give you a little bit more background here, one of the reasons that we want to do that with our program fees is the program fees tend to be a little more dynamic in terms of what we do with those from year to year. So by having a established cost recovery formula that we would have across the board for all of our programs, then staff can plug in those numbers as they develop programs each year. We can put those fee structures together. We can still have a published list of program fees for the proposed, proposed programs for the year, but it's not something that has to be in the resolution. So in turn, if you want to make any adjustments, you don't have to come back to the commission each time for individual adjustments on a program or programs. So I think it really, it still allows you to have kind of a policy, overall, kind of overarching policy that dictates what the fee structure looks like, but we set those fees administratively, as, as each year may dictate some adjustments in fees based on what services are being offered. And so that, I think that's really the key point with this, is the cost recovery does allow us to continue to respond to some of the pressures on our budget, and to, to continue to make sure that we're generating a little more revenue with some of our programs, but yet not, not at a level that should create any, you know, real hardships. And, and that setting those fees administratively makes it a little more efficient for how we can operate our programs. So those are kind of the three decision points, cost recovery discussion, setting program fees administratively, and the approval of the rec center rental fees as, as proposed. Glad to answer any questions you might have, or certainly Eddie can join back in as well.
Just on to the last, you know, of course, the recommendation that we're making is to approve the resolution as it was presented in its draft form. I do want to again point out that this resolution contains language to increase cost recovery and to set program fees administratively. So if, if there's a recommended change to that, we would bring that back to you at a later time. But I also want to point out one other thing. We all know this, Parks and Recreation has a budget of approximately $9 million that covers all our different divisions. We generate millions of dollars in revenue from the various fees that we have, but they don't match up. We generate close to $3 million in fees. Increasing cost recovery can help close that gap a little bit. Not very much, but it can. And that cost recovery has been in place since the 80s. It's been the same approach in setting fees for quite some time. I really think since the department itself first originated in the 80s. Ron might be able to state that as well. So I simply think, I, I think we need to just ask ourselves that. Should we consider increasing that cost recovery? It's been in place for nearly 40 years. And given what we're faced with decreasing revenues and increasing expenses, I think we need to ask ourselves that question. So with that, happy to answer questions.
Yeah, I, I think the 110% cost recovery thing for most of the programs is, is very logical and such, and we, and the commission has taken the perspective of sort of user fees, the people that are using stuff should pay for it, whether it's the parking garage, the airport, whatever, things like that. The people that are using the Parks and Recreation programs need to, need to be the main funders of that. And the 90% of the people that aren't participating in those programs will still continue to provide the background for the Parks and Recreation Department, the parks and pools, and everything else like that. But yeah, I think this, if this commission is going to be consistent, then we're going to want to sort of approach this from a user fee type of thing, if the person using the program should pay for it. So I'm all, I, I, I'm in favor of 110%, set the fees administratively. If you screw up, Ron will yell at you, or we'll yell at Ron, and we'll get it straight to next year. So I'm not overly concerned about looking over your shoulder, making sure you're, you've got the exact 10% cost recovery thing. Because there's, the commission still has checks and balances, and don't need to make all those decisions ourselves, every, especially if it's a hassle and bogs down the process and keeps you guys from providing the services that people are expecting you to provide, so. And the new facility rental fees seems about right. Yeah, $45 an hour times 12 hours is $4,000 bucks, so $2,500 is a, a good deal on the, to not have to worry about running a bunch, yeah, having a bunch of different people coming in that weekend and just having one group there. So I think that, that seems logical. Thumbs up on all three for me.
I have a question about the rental fee, the rental fees. Just comparing the, the different minutes, I was trying to follow the discussion between March 1st with the Parks and Rec, and then the discussion with the Douglas Center. Those two minutes, and it sounds like the fees were just, or Parks and Rec Advisory Board was not in favor of the higher of the 50, but they were looking for something lesser, or something non-peak, or nuanced in that way. And, but does that mean that the Douglas Center was comfortable with that 50 rate?
Yes.
Okay.
We presented the same information to both boards, and the Douglas Center Advisory Board, there wasn't quite as much discussion with that board.
Okay.
It's in a virtual meeting with them, but they were supportive of the fees that we had shown them. And that included the $50 amount.
The 45, I think you said this earlier, is kind of that compromise?
Right.
In meeting both of those, and it's consistent at three, all three facilities then, rather than one being 40 and the other two being 50 or something?
Yep.
Okay.
We feel that's important to occur, because it's a basketball court at Anthony, it's a basketball court at Isidore, and a basketball court at the Douglas, and we need to, we need to be as consistent as we can.
The other question I have is in regard to the, the list of fees, where it says current fee 110% on one column, and then it's current fee 100% cost recovery. So current fee on some of them are already at 110, is that, or was that a typo?
That's correct.
Oh, that's correct.
For adult programs.
For adult programs.
Adult programs have been at 110% per the current resolution, and all the other programs have been at 100%. So we would tend to be moving them to 110 and 120. 120 for adult programs, 110% for all the other programs.
So rather than it being everything at 110, we're in essence saying we want to increase a 10% from what it is today.
That's correct.
And that will be the rate.
10% increase across the board.
Thank you.
On cost recovery.
So the youth sports would be, yeah, I'm on. Youth sports would go from the current direct cost rate to 110%?
It'd go from 100 to 110, that's correct.
Let me get back to the resolution, I'm not sure, I had some questions. I think I don't have any more questions.
Yeah, I, I read through the, the packet in detail. I think, you know, the, the numbers that were presented there on the various fees, they look fine to me. You know, you know, everything from, even the Twilight Swim is up a little bit. We started at the dollar, and it's up to three, but, but I think that's fair. And, and of course, really the only place where you're getting the 110 cost recovery is in these specific programs. It's not the swimming pools, and it's not some of the other things.
That's correct. Again, we're looking at program fees only is what we're talking about in this discussion. So those admission fees are, as you suggested, kind of tied into the philosophy for what we're doing with water park fees. And that overall is about a 50% cost recovery, you know, based on what the direction we've had in the past for, for that operation.
Yeah, and when we fought that over the years, yeah, and, and we knew we could never go to 100% on that and survive on that end of it. So I, I, I think you've done a good job of analyzing, you know, the numbers, and I like the idea of, you know, you having the flexibility to, to adjust these programs without having to do a lot of paperwork, and come back and take up staff time and commission time on it. I think it's, I think it's a solid recommendation, so I'm all for it as written.
I, I do have a question. On March 1st, the Parks and Rec Board was not supportive of increased cost recovery for program fees, and indicated recreation programs needed to remain affordable for the community. Has that, did they reiterate that in subsequent meetings? Is that, I mean, they haven't changed that position?
It really didn't, it really wasn't addressed in the, in the meeting that occurred last night, which would be the, the next meeting after that March meeting. And it was a little bit of a, I wouldn't say changed direction, but it was a little bit of a, of a different stance than what we had heard at some previous meetings with the advisory board. So I think it was just, the concern on their part is to try to keep things affordable, and to maintain, you know, that, that level of cost recovery, something that's, that's feasible. But I don't believe the 10% that we've recommended is unreasonable. I think it's a reasonable adjustment for us, and I think it's a place that we need to, to take that step. Again, when you look what it actually does to fees, it really doesn't change them much differently than we have, as you saw in those progressions over the last, you know, almost 20 years. Periodically, we've done those kinds of adjustments anyway.
And I think, you know, one of the things that is not embedded in this resolution, but takes place, and it was mentioned in the financing, is we do have scholarship options to make it affordable for those that can. And I think, you know, the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation kicked in a substantial amount, you know, for the past two years, and some of it's carryover. And, and so the idea that, you know, we don't want to deny anybody the ability to take part in this, and so that scholarship program is going to, is going to be the safety net for, for somebody that, you know, would just absolutely be denied. So I appreciate what the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation has done to help us in that area.
As do we. That's been a very, very, a big plus for us to have that dedicated funding, so we know that that is available for the community. And I agree with that philosophy as well, that we want to make sure that everyone has access to the programs.
Can, on that, can you describe how, if there's somebody listening, or for the media, anybody, how they would go about getting that scholarship?
It's going to involve, because our offices are not open right now to the public yet, it's going to involve probably some, some telephone work at this point, because it's something that we normally have somebody come in, and, and there's an application they would fill out, that, and it's very, it's a simple process. It's tied to the, the same income guidelines that is used with the school lunch program. And so that information that's already been collected for that, for that program can also be used for ours as well. But it is, it is something that you have to fill out, the request, and because we're not actually, we can, we can work through the customer service office here at City Hall. And, you know, at some point in time when the, the office does open up, again, it'll be easier for people to access that directly. But, but there is a process that you just, you need to contact our office, and we'll help walk them through that as far as what they need to do to apply for that. And then we can, once approved, then we can apply that to their account, and have it available for them to utilize for any of those programs they'd like to.
And traditionally, the obstacles to that haven't been, you know, very, very tough to do. It's just the, the, the current conditions is just because of the pandemic.
Right.
But if somebody were going to need a scholarship, they certainly would, it wouldn't be too difficult.
It wouldn't be difficult.
We don't want to discourage somebody from applying just because of some, they have to go through a couple steps. And then that scholarship is a, is it a 50% or?
It is, that's correct.
50% reduction in the fee?
That's correct. And they, and they give, there's an amount that they are given each year that's, I think capped at 150, and then that's applied to those programs accordingly. And so it is a nice, a nice benefit for those families that would, that would like to take advantage of that.
How many scholarships did you give last year?
Well, last year doesn't really count, unfortunately.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
That's a good one.
In, in 2019, I don't have the information in front of me, but we used all of the funds available in 2019.
Sure.
And we were authorized, again, last year with some additional funds from the foundation, and were able to carry most of that over to this year.
So we don't know how many?
I think in the packet, it said $14,000 carryover, and $20,000 for this year, so that's about $34,000. That's a pretty nice amount.
I don't know how many that is.
And I'll just, I'll point out also, Commissioner Esther Brooke, we opened up some programs this week. Day camp, some swimming lessons, and our staff, they were going out front and meeting with people in the lobby to assist them as they needed to. Most of our registrations are online now, and people are, I think it's, they appreciate that. But we, we still accommodate people when they come in, and either through the customer service windows, or our staff is actually going out and sitting with them in the lobby to assist people that need it. So we're, we're going to try to be as accommodating as we can.
So yes, please call us or check in at the customer service counter.
Yes, Commissioner Ready, I have a few questions. I did watch the Parks and Rec Board meeting last night, and Board meeting last night, and what I heard was that Eddie's saying we're going to be presenting it to the City Commission, and letting us know that Parks and Rec did not, was not in favor of the, um, re- request that's being made this evening. And then we were going to discuss it also. So that was clear, that was just gonna be rea- reiterated, the recommendation, and why. And I understand that, the thirty-five dollars as opposed to forty-five dollars that's being recommended, I believe, and the fees being affordable for our public. So I get that piece of it. And I think for the three factors that you had up there, I'm okay with the, the proposal being made tonight as far as the cost recovery for forty-five dollars and so forth and so on, mainly because the part that's okay for me is that when the two rec centers open up, including the Douglas Center, it'll be still open for public. So they can still go in, you can still walk in, have your noon pickle ti- pickleball time if you want, you don't have to pay forty-five dollars or thirty-five dollars for that. You can still walk around the paths that are up, upstairs, you can still do your regular activities because the community is already paying for these facilities through their sales tax. The recommended numbers are for practice for teams, competitive play, and any kind of intramural, I would assume, that need to be rented for a specific designated time on a specific day. Otherwise, if it's open, it's open to everybody. And I, what time are the rec centers open, the middle school rec centers? Is it eight to nine, or eight to five, or what, what times are those open?
We anticipate during the school year, they'll have a fairly lengthy timeframe they'll be open. Will open at seven in the morning because of, of working with the middle school schedule because of that shared use in, on the, the school side gym. And then we'll probably be open till either nine or ten o'clock at night is what we're looking at during, during the school year. And then we'll come, we'll cut that back a little bit during our summer, for summer hours. But, yeah, we want to make them available for a, a lengthy period of time to accommodate program use, drop-in use by the public, as you mentioned, and potential rentals, and try to balance all those, all those uses in the facilities. But anticipate that they'll be in, in high demand in certain times of the year especially.
And what, one of the reasons the sales tax initiative passed for the rec centers is also for that competitive play, team competitive play around the state and region. And hopefully, we are still gonna be actively promoting and seeking those tournaments here, whether it be a chess club, a basketball tournament, wrestling, whatever it is, because that was gonna be the ultimate revenue source for operations and maintenance, since the taxpayers are already utilizing their taxpayer money to get, get the infrastructure up and going. So I want to make sure we're not overburdening them. The piece about the free and reduced lunch and looking at schools and seeing how people that cannot afford these can utilize it, and, you know, we talked about scholarships, there was a cap of a hundred and fifty dollars per family. Is there a reason there's a cap of a hundred and fifty dollars?
The cap is to try to provide access for as many families as possible, because if we, if we, if we allow a larger limit on that, then it's, the potential is for it to get used by a smaller number of families, and they might not use all of, all the funds that are available, you know, to them in a given year. So, I think the effort was to try to have a cap that give them, would give them access to have some assistance for several programs per year, but it would also make it spread as far as possible. And so I think that's the number we had arrived at. And it's been in that place for several years that way.
Yeah. I would look at changing that cap mainly because if you're a family of three or four children, it can add up really quickly, the hundred and fifty dollars. And if you have one kid and you have a hundred and fifty dollar cap, I can see how that would be good for them. They can join a few programs. But if you have, if you're a parent and both of your parents are working over the summer and they're trying to figure out programs, and a hundred and fifty dollars is the cap, it not, might not be as good for them if they have more than one or two children. And oftentimes, most, most people do, and the ranges vary, the age ranges vary. So I would look at raising that cap a little bit beyond a hundred and fifty, especially since you said there was leftover money, quote-unquote leftover money from those funds. So there's, hopefully, people that are not tapping into it, or maybe that need it, but it's been capped at a hundred and fifty. So I want to see how that looks for at least one or two years, and if maybe people are misusing it. But I just don't see people misusing it when there's a need for, for our children to be actively engaged in these activities. And sometimes, I know when I was raising my kids, I tried to find as many free things as possible in the summer, because I had three kids, and it was, just doing one program, swimming lessons alone killed, killed my income for, for that summer, or whatever it might be. And especially such, something as swimming, because that becomes a life skill. And that's something we want to make sure everybody is taking advantage of and having some of those swimming lessons. But I just want to see if we can move that cap a little bit higher. As far as setting administrative fee, setting the fees and leaving it just to the administration decide, to decide that, I, I'm not for that at this time. I think we should still revisit, the City Commission should revisit some of those areas when we need to make more increases. We felt that position when pool fees were discussed at length, and that, that may have been an anomaly. But I just want to make sure we are consistently looking at affordability and what it is we are discussing, because we get the emails, and we may not always know the answers, but at the same time, I don't want to just keep forwarding it to you because these impact a lot of families, and sometimes families that are, are single parenting may not have the voice to email us even. But we want to make sure we are addressing their needs as we, as we talk to other families in our community, in our school district. So that's, that's my feedback, but I don't know where it falls in the resolution. So, thank you.
Just, last couple of things, Commissioner Hattasal here. I, I appreciate the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's work and discussion here. But, yeah, they only, they're not in charge of balancing the whole city budget and making this whole thing work, and, and the problem is, is if we, if we don't close the gap of what income we take in versus what we spend, them programs get axed. And, and it doesn't do anybody any good to have a subsidized program that does not exist if we can't somehow generate a little extra money to provide those programs. So I appreciate the Parks and Recreation Board not wanting to raise those fees, but there's two parts of this story, and, and their concern is just providing the services. Our job is to figure out how to make sure the services exist in order to be provided. So, on a different, slightly different subject, since we probably won't have a chance to talk about it before the pools open, I, I remember complaining to Ron, at one point, back when the pools actually were open, about they're closing so early in August, and, and I know that one of the reasons stated to close them early is because we don't generate any new money the last few weeks of Au- August, because the only people that show up are season ticket holders who haven't paid since May or June, and they're still just showing up free and not generating any money, and the whole thing is just a big money pit after that. And so I don't know if, if, as part of a, a solution to that, I don't know how much a season pass is, but maybe, and I, I know it's, I guess if the person's got a pass, and somehow we've got their name and, and, and a permit, if we could go to a sort of a punch card system of sorts where if, if a season pass is, what, forty-five, fifty bucks, let's say it's fifty bucks for all year, maybe that should be twenty-five visits, and so that's only, that's five times a week for five weeks. If they're, if they're coming in more than that, then they're, they're getting more than fifty dollars worth of pool time. It, it, it might be something to think about. I'm sure, sure there's drawbacks, and people can point out why it's a bad idea, but it has a potential to be a, if we could keep those, those park, those pools open, I know some of it's lifeguards, and some of it's we don't make any money, and it's just, keeping it open just costs more money. But that might address some of the concern of nobody's paying that last few weeks of the year, and that might help. And if people are using the pool that much, that they've already been there twenty-five times in the first, first month and a half, then, then a season pass should, yeah, we need to capture more income on the people that are heavy users, following this whole user fee type of a thing. It's two dollars to go swimming for a day, it's still pretty cheap, two fifty, whatever, but just, I'm sure that somebody's thought about that before and thought, figured it was a bad idea, but I want to think about it again because of that issue of nobody's paying the last few months, weeks of the year. And if there's some way that we could generate some income, keep a pool open with some of the lifeguards that haven't gone back to college or school, I would like to just try to see that, if it's not a total money pit and just a waste of time.
I think one of the options you could also consider is to package in the, what we would call the extended season separately from the regular season, and, and you have something that you would sell just for that timeframe, and that's another option as well. So, there are a couple of different ways you could look at that. In two thousand nineteen, our last full season, we did have the, and for, I think a couple of years prior to that even, we did have the extended season at, at the Sico location, because it was probably a little more economical to operate that location than to keep the larger facility at City open. So, that did, that did help some with narrowing that, you know, that gap a little bit. And that's something, obviously, you don't have that location available, or plan to have that location available this summer. But we will, I think, look at some, some opportunities to package that in a way that it might make a little more sense to generate perhaps a little more revenue.
Yeah, I like that concept there, maybe an extended season pass, and, and then you could maybe get an idea of how many people are gonna use it, and you could maybe determine which pool you're gonna leave open, or which ones you'll close, that, that could have some advantages. And then I wanted to, Commissioner Reddy mentioned, you know, this raising the cap on the scholarships. You, you might consider doing it by child instead of family, because the idea is to get more kids involved, and that way the large family, you know, would of course have a higher cap. You have four children, you know, the cap would be per child instead of per family. And, and I don't know the details of that, but just something to consider, that's sort of a separate issue you could bring back on how to work the scholarship thing, and I think that might work.
Just thinking about that, as you, as was mentioned, potentially you could have an amount per family member, but still it all minds together for a total for the family. So, a little larger family would generate a larger number, but they still have the flexibility to use it how they want to within their family, so.
Yep, something like that would work. So we need to open it up for public comment, if there's anyone that wishes to speak on this topic tonight. And I don't believe we received, we did not receive any public comments through the web or, or email. So seeing no one that wishes to make public comment, we'll close-
I have, I have some comments.
Public comment.
Yeah. I'm kind of torn here, because I do respect the Parks and Recreation Board, and the fact that it was unanimous from them that they, quote, "were not supportive of increasing the cost recovery," is prob- a problem for me. On the other hand, I guess I don't have any problem with regard to the increasing, or, or setting the costs and increasing them for tournament play, and the cost of the facilities. You gotta charge what you gotta charge, but it's, uh, for, and those are brand-new facilities, and we need to not undercut the costs when we start up, I guess. On the other hand, we do typically close the pools by the first week, around the first week in August, and I have been an advocate of keeping them open, one open. But because the commission can't keep it open, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not interested in turning over the administration, administration of the fees totally to the, to the staff. I think it is April, and we haven't got those settled yet. And other communities know how much, I looked up a couple on the web, how much, what's their swimming fee? And they've got a rate posted there. And I'm anxious to get that information out into the public as long as possible. If we, if we haven't set them yet, you can't advertise them yet, so, anyway, just-
We're not, we're not suggesting setting admission fees administratively, only program fees. It has nothing to do with swimming pool admissions, it has, the discussion doesn't have anything to do with admission fees to the zoo or the Discovery Center, rental fees. Setting fees administratively is only the program fees that Randy indicated here for adult programs, youth programs. It's, it's not admissions to swimming pools.
I under- okay, fine.
Our, our fees are set and are listed.
Yep. Just to clarify, the revised ordinance that's in front of you doesn't change any of the fees that were in the previous, or, excuse me, the revised resolution that's in front of you doesn't change any of the fees for any of the facilities that was already in place in the current resolution. It only adds the recreation center fees in terms of facility.
So although not all recreation venues are equal, we need, I, I re- do realize we need uniformity, and saw that several times in the material, the uniformity of facility fees. Our fees do need to be affordable and in line with other communities, but some of these facilities are brand-new, and I think that is, should be a, something defining here, too. I am interested in efficiency, but we don't have to wait until April, like this month, because I know you're gonna be under pressure to get the, you know, get this information out to the public or to those who want to rent the facilities. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna be voting no on the resolution because I can't pick and choose, and I either have to take it, yes, or it's an up or a down, and I'm gonna vote no. So, thank you.
No further discussion, we can-
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a, just a brief comment about, just part of the philosophy of recovery. So, keep in mind, and, and I don't know if Eddie wants to bring up the direct cost example. So, these are very reasonable fees, and as Eddie said, that this, the, the philosophy of, of overcharging adults by ten percent and charging a hundred percent for youth is, sounds onerous maybe in the full aspect, but, and the whole cost approach of things, this direct cost that you're recovering is just the seasonal cost. It isn't paying anything for overhead of permanent staff, it isn't paying anything for all of the backbone structure of HR, or accounting, or any of that. So, it isn't paying anything on the facility cost as far as the operation of that facility costs. So, I think it's a good start because these are new facilities, and that we want them to align with our fees. But once you go through a full years of operation and see what our recovery cost is compared to our expenses, we'll need to revisit this.
I have a question for you, Ron. So, if this were to, this, in the philosophy of it, not, if it's, the fees are changed administratively, I think I heard Commissioner, Commissioner Hattasal mention, you know, if somebody is upset with some fees, then we'll, we'll hear from it as commissioners, and we can, we can then relate to city manager, and then it can be addressed that way. Is that, currently, some of the delay that we're hearing is because we, it needs to come before us, and, do you see that as a, let's say you're gone in twenty years, and, and there's new people in different positions, is there, the accountability of this is a little bit of the philosophy I hear sometimes from the Parks and Rec, Board, Advisory Board members and things, should there be accountability so it comes to the commission? Or are we comfortable with it going the way that was described, where we would hold the city manager accountable to hold the flowing that way? I mean, is that, is that a, I'm sorry if I'm muddling it up, but I'm trying to distill two alternative theories, I guess, of how it could be held accountable.
Sure, and, and that's certainly appropriate. However, we're going to be very transparent in how we come up with the program fees, which is a small section of this for, for that aspect, and any new programs that are creating. That's one of the reasons that, that it helps us to do that. And annually review that. I, I see bringing this back, you know, quite frankly, we probably should have a definition of direct cost in the resolution. And that's something we can add a year from now, or when we bring it back. So, so that you know what you're gauging those fees on. And after you've gone through a full year- And after you've gone through a full year, uh, of operations, you'll have a report that shows here were your costs and here was your recovery of, of revenue. So, and that's gonna vary. Uh, you know, obviously it's gonna be probably not as much for this first year, especially when you're opening at the end of a pandemic. Uh, but, and it's gonna take a little time to get some of those special events there that are renting the facility for, for, for sports. But those are the things that are gonna help some of those aspects. But there'll be, there'll be some similarities with the pool reports. So I'm just, I'm just saying, because it doesn't, that, that direct to costs approach. And it's not an unusual, I mean, it, it's, it's pretty much how the rec industry works in setting those fees. But sometimes you put in a little bit to gain some of that capital cost back or that other overhead back or some of those other components that are helping these programs exist. So this is the most affordable, more, for the most part, a very affordable fee setting process based on that previous direct cost, uh, definition.
And with the flexibility to adapt and change and be more efficient is kind of the flip side of that is setting those fleet, fees to hit that capacity. Cause I think we've heard multiple times that the Parks and Rec people want people in Parks and Rec, right? Like that, the goal is to get the people there, not to price them out. So I'm understanding those are your intentions and to find that piece in that right spot, this give, this also gives you the flexibility to do that without constantly coming back and going through this process.
Well, what I was gonna suggest also, you have the ability now to provide an answer that says, "Our cost recovery goal is this." And our pricing in all of our programs is based on that cost recovery goal. And so you have pretty much a standard approach that you can apply to that discussion with people as they, as they have questions about fees. Again, when you look at that ten percent increase and what it did, remember that column? It, it doesn't, it's not a significant impact to, to fees that we're talking about. And it wouldn't even go into effect until probably this fall because we've already set, have these set for the spring and summer programs, you know. So it's not something that's been having immediate impact either. It'll be something that would roll into the fall and twenty twenty-two would be the first full year, we would see the benefit of that.
And, and I'll just say to echo Ron, you know, those direct costs, when you looked at that list of programs that we have, it's extremely varied. That's why we did not, though, list each one of those direct costs associated with those programs because they're so varied. When you think of the Discovery Center education programs or the camps that we have, or some of the unique, um, activities that the zoo has. Um, it just varies widely, you know, from our arts and crafts programs, whether it's pottery, um, those sort of things, or it's a baseball bat in a, in a youth baseball program. You know, we have to know those things that are directly associated with those programs and apply those expenses to that. So we can give some definitions, um, of direct. But again, I want to be careful with it because it varies tremendously. And we want it to because we want to be able to offer varied programmed activities for the community. So.
Yeah, and I think a good example of that, I know two years ago, you, you had a group that went to some, uh, Kansas City Chiefs football games. And, and of course you do, you have to, you don't know what the tickets are gonna cost or how many people are gonna sign up or what size bus. And there's all kinds of things that did that. And I did that one time. And I thought, I thought it was interesting, but, but again, it, it, that's why you need the flexibility for something like that especially. I mean, actually this year we might overcharge because I think they lowered the rates at a lot of those professional sports games. And so you could maybe have it go the other way in this case and it would cost the people a little bit less. So. So as I said, I'm, I'm in favor of the flexibility.
I think a number of members of boards and commissions devote a lot of time to serving on those boards. And it's disillusioning for them when the higher body, the commission, just ignores their recommendation. And so I think it matters. I think it's always hard for a mayor to find enough people to serve on boards and committees. And, um, so I just think it's a, a matter of perhaps working more effectively with that board, trying to get, uh, a better understand, for them, a better understanding. But I'm going to, uh, we stick with the urban area planning board's recommendations because we have to. It's legal. I think we need to pay attention to the, the Parks and Recreation Board too. Or go back to them and, and, uh, be, communicate better.
Commissioner Hassel here. Well, yeah, first of all, they're an advisory board. They advise us. While they would like us to probably take their advice, we're not obligated to take their advice. The buck stops here. It doesn't stop at the, at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And I've always told people, anybody that'll sit still and listen, I've always taken the perspective, the commission should have this ten thousand foot view of operations. We're a policy board. We set a policy and then we turn Ron and his people loose to do the management. So some of you guys wanna be ma- a management board of managing the city. That ain't what the commission's about. At least it's not what I'm about when the commission. Let's set some policy, let them implement it. If, if you guys wanna manage the city, then apply for assistant city manager job or something and get in there and do the day-to-day management of city operations. But saying that, I would move that we approve resolution number four oh, oh four oh six twenty-one B, setting the fees for Parks and Recreation Programs, rentals, admissions and memberships.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. So City Clerk, Brenda Wolf, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hassel.
Yes.
Commissioner Estebroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
I still had a question, uh, before the motion was called. Um, do I just vote without asking my question?
Ask your question, Yusha.
Because I think, I don't know how the Parks and Rec Board had, when they had the discussion about city administration determining and adjusting program fees. That wasn't in the minutes anywhere, but I know there was a discussion about it.
It's on page four of our packet.
In the packet I indicated. That they weren't supportive of setting fees administratively.
Not administratively. Okay. Then I will have to vote now. Thank you.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay, that brings us to item B on the agenda, which is Convention and Visitors Bureau, CVB, twenty twenty-one first quarter report. And I think we have Karen Hibbert, Director of Convention and Visitors Bureau, to entertain us for the next hour.
Thank you. Well, we also have our steering committee chairman, Bernie Haney is here virtually as soon as I pull up our presentation. And do you know where it is?
And I was gonna have you share the screen too.
Let's go to slide show. Go to the slide show right there. From the beginning. And, okay. There you go. Hey Bernie, how are you?
Hey Karen.
Okay.
Good.
Bernie, you're on.
Well, good evening, commissioners. Uh, as Karen said, my name is Bernie Haney and this is take two as the CVB Steering Committee Chairperson. Uh, as the opportunity last year and they gave me another opportunity this year to, uh, advise and, and the steering committee with Karen and her staff. Um, it's almost time to leverage our strengths into twenty twenty-one and beyond. Um, not sure if many of you have taken a look at our new CVB website, uh, manhattancvb.org. Great information and visuals and, uh, Karen's, uh, staff did a nice job of working with the company that put that new website together for the future. Uh, one thing I don't know if you knew, I didn't know, is, uh, there's twenty-three lodging options uh, listed on the website when you consider hotels and bed and breakfasts and Tuttle Creek. So there's lots of opportunities for people to come, travel and, and, uh, stay at one of the twenty-three options here in Manhattan. Uh, also, it's a time to, uh, utilize our strength and elevate our social media as we move forward. Invite travel writers to return and showcase to meeting planners virtually and in person our hands conference center and other meeting locations. One thing you guys were discussing, it's time to take advantage of future youth sporting events. Utilize our outdoor facilities and make investments to improve these facilities in the future. And the ninety-seven thousand square feet of new indoor rec space opening soon, which you discussed tonight and about the fees and the charges. But youth sporting events are a great travel and tourism, uh, revenue generator. The CVB did receive its TGT payment of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in mid-March. Approximately a hundred thousand dollars less than normal, but as Coach Snyder has said, get a little better every day. And that's something that, uh, Karen Hibbert and the staff has done. And she's a great, does a great job of leveraging our tourism strengths. And Karen, I'll leave it to you.
Well, Bernie, thank you. Again, what a difference. Think about this. Last year, twenty twenty, we were all virtual as we were doing this presentation. So, um, it's nice that we have this technology. It's nice to be able to share with you our accomplishments. It's nice with you, for us to share with you some of our challenges that are still before us. Also, Jason Smith, President, CEO of the Chamber is here with us also. If you have any questions at the end of this presentation between the two of us and Bernie online, I'm sure we'll be able to address those. Again, we wanted to start out with what a year twenty twenty was. We lived history when you think about that. We are living that day-to-day. Twenty twenty was the year that business was hit hard. Our hospitality industry, which includes our attractions, events, dining and shopping, all are vital to attract those visitors to our community, were shut down. With travels being discouraged for the majority of the year, we have experienced all-time lows. Our annual report reflects the challenges that we experienced in twenty twenty as well as the positive things that happened. There were several of those things that were positive that maybe we've glossed over. The Manhattan Conference Center was expanded, completed ahead of time. And with that, no meetings had to be displaced during that time. Another highlight of the year, we've talked about that. The Manhattan Visitors Guide received the award for being the best visitors guide by the travel industry of Kansas. Our Visitors Guide was and continues to be a much requested item for folks as they plan their visits to the Flint Hills of Kansas and to our community. But let's not dwell on twenty twenty during this report. We'd rather focus on things that we have learned and we're eager to celebrate our improvements that are being made for twenty twenty-one.
Could you either move the microphone in or turn the other one? We should stand in kind of in between.
How's this? Is this better? Great. Our steering committee, who Bernie is the chair of, meets the first Wednesday of the even months. We trust that Bernie's track record improves as we're eager to meet in person during twenty twenty-one. Serving on the steering committee is a three-year commitment and we would like to acknowledge our newest members for the next three years are Becky Katzenmeyer, who represents attractions, Ryan Platt, who runs the hat and represents entertainment, and Brad Everett, who represents hotels. The other folks that are listed on here, uh, have served either now their third year or, or into their second year of serving. And we really gratefully are appreciative of those that serve on this advisory committee. As Bernie mentioned, we have launched our new website and if technology works with me, I'm going to share with you, oh, you know what I need to do, Jared? I need to share that enable content. Can we get that? Cause this is kind of cool. Bear with us. Do we have to stop share?
Are you trying to get it so that all the others can hear the content?
So it will, it, we checked it before, yeah.
Optimize for video clip?
It usually pops up down here. Can we get out of the presentation? Yeah, let's stop share. Yeah, he's done. Yeah. Excuse us as we get technology to work. Yep. Should be.
I'm just thankful to have that screen.
Let's go completely out of it.
This would not be good if it weren't there.
Pull up the promotional video on the website.
Nope. Let's see if we can go back to view. A minute.
You mean that, repeat the slide?
And it should say optimize. Let me go back. Where are we at? Right here. Enable content. That's what I want. Okay. Can you see that now? Here's our new website. We launched this at the beginning of the year. This is gonna go fast. So as it's loading, our website present, previously had many of these options. But our new website enhances these amenities, allowing the cust- the consumer ease to navigate on our site. As soon as this downloads, you will see, visitmanhattanks.org. It starts with an inviting video, has an easy to navigate homepage. Our calendar for events is very prominent for the visitor to see what fall is happening. Our hotels and lodging are very prominent as well. You easily can choose what events to attend, what our dining options are, as well as the ability to plan your trip and to be exposed to our blog. We've had great response to our new website. We encourage you to go visit it And it's on all of those platforms. Thanks for your patience on that. A great website should increase our ability to attract visitors. Indeed, that's exactly the case as we have increased our website visitors by fourteen percent from last year's first quarter. We're pleased to report that we have also increased our website visitors by forty-nine point six percent from the fourth quarter of last year. To compare the first quarter of twenty twenty last year, we had seventeen thousand seven hundred and thirty users. In the first quarter of twenty twenty-one, we already have twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-two users. The Smith Travel Research Report, the STAR Report, is so very important to us. This report provides a clear picture of what our lodging performance is doing. We were saddened to have the Hampton Inn taken out of our inventory due to fire. Please note, the STAR Report reflects that these seventy-two rooms of the Hampton Inn is no longer a part of our report. The most current month-to-month report that I can give to you is February. I'll probably receive my March month-to-month report mid-April. But as of February, month-to-month, February, the occupancy was at forty-one point four percent. The average daily rate was eighty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. The rev par was thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents. And that truly tells the story of the difficulties that our lod- lodging industry is facing. The supply is thirty-two thousand six hundred and twenty. The demand for our rooms in February was thirteen thousand five hundred and nine, generating the revenues of a little over a million dollars. Keep in mind, when you look at that February twenty twenty, we were really set for a, a robust February because the pandemic had not hit us yet in February of twenty twenty. Year-to-date, the STAR Report through February shows that that occupancy is setting at thirty-eight percent with the average daily rate at eighty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. And again, that rev par, thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. I do, however, receive on a more timely basis, the week-to-week, how our performance is doing. And look, you can celebrate with us. We have three up. And look, you can celebrate with us. We have three up arrows. We're beginning to see what a difference a year can make. March 2020 was when the world shut down. The last week of March in 2020 was our lowest occupancy of the first quarter of 2020 with a 21.3% occupancy. Just when we thought we couldn't go any lower, we did. The second week of April reflected a 16.2% occupancy. And in all of the years that I have had the privilege of working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I had never seen an occupancy that low. However, we cannot fixate on the past. Rather, we're going to learn from it and move on. We're beginning to see those numbers move up slightly. Again, keeping in mind, these numbers are a little off because you have 72 rooms that are less included in that market. But needless to say, we are ecstatic to see that the fourth week of March, we were setting at a 55.2% occupancy for the week. We recently subscribed to the Air DNA Report. Like the STAR Report, this data reflects lodging that is rented either as an entire structure, vacation rentals, a private bedroom, or a couch. This inventory changes week to week. It's entirely possible for a vacation rental to be on the market for only one month out of the year. I want you to look at this chart and don't think that I have totally lost it, but I have compared 2020 to where we are currently in February of 2021. So for the, through the year-to-date in 2020, we had available listings of vacation rentals of 231. We had, those had an occupancy rate of about 51% with an average daily rate of about $131 with a RevPAR of about $67. The available listings in February, 130 with the occupancy rate of 46%. Average daily rate at 119 and the revenue per room is about $55. Any guesses at which month might be the most active in these vacation home rentals?
September, October?
Oh, you could be right on with that. Yes, indeed. So again, month-to-month, this is a new report for us. But as we follow it, we're following it with great interest as to how that performance, how that performance performs.
Karen, have you ever tried to estimate the amount of transient guest tax that we would, that we're missing by not applying it to the short-term rentals?
These short-term rentals do pay a transient guest tax. It's a B and breakfast. If a B and breakfast is in the city limits and has less than four rooms, they do not pay.
It's a B and B, but we have a lot, I mean, we have rentals for short-term.
Oh, you mean like a?
That are not on Airbnb.
Right.
They're off the grid, so to speak.
Right. It's like a, maybe it's a?
That's what I wondered if there's ever been an attempt to estimate.
Not that I'm aware of Jared, Ron, I'm not aware of that at all.
That's what they tell me too. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So I am very proud to be a native Kansan. Every year on January 29th, Kansas celebrates our statehood. This past January, Kansas celebrated 160 years. The state motto, "To the Stars Through Difficulties," lives beyond the state steel. It's what makes Kansas, Kansas. We partnered in the Kansas Day Celebration with Kansas Tourism as we showcased what makes Manhattan, Kansas, unique. With our To the Stars video created specifically for Kansas Day, our results were six partners tagging us in their posts on Instagram, 11 partners used our hashtags on Instagram, and one partner mentioned us on Twitter. Our partnerships with Kansas Tourism is so very valuable. And we have adjusted to the land of virtual during this past year. Not only with the Kansas Day Celebration, we also partnered with the Kansas Travel and Tourism Industry of Kansas with the Day on the Hill where we visited with our representatives in February virtually. Kansas Tourism will be moving to the Department of Commerce effective July 1, 2021. Tourism is indeed an economic driver, which has been proven over and over during this pandemic. Our organic social media efforts continue to grow with a 30% increase in impressions from quarter, from the fourth quarter of 2020. We've continued to keep active on all of our social media channels to engage with those who are planning on traveling when they feel that they are comfortable in which to do so. During the first quarter, we had a total of 17,297 followers. The first quarter marks the end of our Reach Local campaign. The Reach Local campaign proved to be a great investment for us in continuing to get Manhattan, Kansas in front of new travelers. We have since ramped up our in-house marketing efforts advertising on the following platforms, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and Google Ads. We've had a great success in these advertising efforts and we will continue this throughout the second quarter as well. Travel writers help create an interest in our community by visiting and sharing their experiences with their followers and ours. On March 12th through the 20th, March 12th through the 14th of this year, Manhattan hosted Vanessa Whiteside, who represents One Delightful Life here in Manhattan. She enjoyed her stay with us, having a tour of the Beach Museum and taking the Flint Hills, taking in the Flint Hills Discovery Center, Midwest Dream Car Museum, enjoying many dining options, attractions and shopping. She enjoyed being able to experience our St. Patrick's Day Parade in the promise of spring. Really, you can call a travel writer sort of a secret shopper. As a result of her visit, our benefits reflected 16 posts on social media, 30-plus stories, 26,170 impressions, and 316 link clicks. And we also have received awesome photos and followings as a result of One Delightful Life visiting in our community. Our email marketing is an ideal way to connect with the leisure visitor and the mightily important meeting planner. To have an open rate consistently with our Meet Manhattan e-newsletter of more than 25% tells us that we are sharing information the planner is seeking. Our Manhattan Inn e-newsletter is geared to that leisure visitor and also performs well with above-average clicks. Now, as you look at those March numbers, you might think that we were extremely down. However, that is not the case. We had a huge inquiry from the American Road publication and their readers, which caused our open rate to appear down. We did have an open rate, continue to have an open rate, which above 10%, which is almost unheard of. So a job well done to our communications team as they continue to get that word out. Our newsletters are designed to be easily digested on your phone, your tablet, or your desktop, your choice. We look forward to meetings returning to Manhattan in full force. Until then, our marketing efforts to keep Manhattan present in meeting planners' minds is very important. As you look at this publication as it flashes back and forth, I'm going to tell you about this Meet Kansas publication. It's a meeting publication that is a great partner with us in which to tell of different meeting offerings. This fall/winter publication of 2021 has a distribution of over 1,600 with 1,273 pieces directly mailed to meeting planners. 85% were sent to Kansas companies. The rest were sent to planners outside of Kansas who bring business to Kansas. This was a great opportunity for Manhattan, Kansas because as you can see as we flip through this, the front cover is a, is a great picture of the conference center expansion. The inside article talks about our conference center and our other meeting facilities in Manhattan. The last page or the back cover, the only thing that was paid for by Manhattan is that back-page ad. So we were thrilled that we had such, it really looks like it's a Manhattan publication featuring Manhattan in our many offerings. So again, huge kudos to that partnership that has been developed with, for Meet Kansas publication. Throughout 2020, we kept our meeting planners informed of the conference center expansion. With the expansion completed, we created one last video to showcase and to entice planners to come and see for themselves and to choose Manhattan as their meeting of choice. So here you go. You can see what this looks like. Welcome to the Manhattan Conference Center. I'm Karen Hibbert, the Director of the Manhattan Convention and Visitors Bureau. We've been busy over the last 10 months. The Manhattan Conference Center is expanded by 11,800 square feet. We're so pleased to be able to showcase what this expansion looks like. We're standing here in the expanded space of the Manhattan Conference Center. This consists of two rooms, the Flint Hills Room and the Kings Room. This expanded space represents a little over 7,000 square feet. This expanded space can turn into four different breakout rooms, three in the Kings Room and one larger breakout in the Flint Hills Room. I'm standing here in the pre-convene area. Imagine your group meeting here. Long rows of pre-convene tables out here where your groups can mingle, get information from their, from your sponsors, can have great conversations, all those things that are so vitally important when you host a meeting. We're now standing in the Konza Room. Total square footage in the Konza is 3,600 square feet. Breaks into three distinct smaller meeting rooms, each Konza A, B, and C, which are about 1,200 square feet each. We're now in the Big Basin Room. Possibly you've already held a meeting in here as this room is part of the original construction of the Manhattan Conference Center. The Big Basin is up about 3,500 square feet. Today, it's set up for rounds or for theater style. The Big Basin is very similar to the Conation Room that we just showed you. We look forward to you bringing your next meeting to the Manhattan Conference Center where the professional staff can help you have an ideal meeting. At the Manhattan Conference Center, you'll find reader boards outside each meeting room. Ideally, you can place your sponsorship, your logo, the schedule for the day, anything to make your meeting specialized. Technology is so very, very important to you as the meeting planner. It helps set the tone for the entire meeting. With the conference center expansion, technology issues have been addressed. Here's a wall panel in each one of the rooms that controls microphones, lighting, temperature, all of those things that can really be so very important for you to make sure that your attendees are very inspired as they're at your meeting. We trust you've enjoyed the expansion tour of the Manhattan Conference Center. We are so excited to be able to offer this meeting space for you. Flexible meeting space, ideal for however your meeting needs are. Give us a call, 785-776-8829. We're eager for you to say, "Oh Manhattan, that was my best meeting ever." See you soon. Thanks again to Tara Roston in our Communications Division and to Deana Huff for the creation of that video. Marketing sports, what we just have visited about. As Manhattan welcomes our new gems to the market, we are marketing to our sports planners just as we market to those meeting planners. During the first quarter of 2021, we mailed out our sports marketing brochure to 52 sports planners with interests ranging from basketball to wrestling and all the sports in between. Marcia Rozell, our Sports and Leisure Tourism Sales Manager, heads up this marketing effort and has received interest from Mid-America Youth Basketball, Heart of America Volleyball, Live Three-on-Three Soccer, and Prospects on Pickleball. Marcia recently received her Sports Tourism Strategist designation. We're extremely proud of Marcia's dedication to the education, connections, and understanding of sports as we continue to market Manhattan's newest offerings and those sports improvements that are yet to come. And a true show of spring was the ability to host 2A State Basketball. This tournament was won like never before. It was three days of the tournament rather than four days, two games rather than four games, streamlined volunteers, no team hosts, 15% capacity of fans, social distancing, and all other COVID protocols were in place. With these restrictions, we were able to host a very successful 2A State Basketball tournament. We welcomed in 4,011 in attendance, where normally it would be about 10,000 over that time. But again, those 4,000 fans were ecstatic to be there. The one thing that we also did and we were very pleased to do, we crowned two champions. The Sterling Girls won their first state championship ever and the Hillsboro Boys took home the crown as well. As we have reviewed the activities of the first quarter of 2021, we're confident that we're off to a great start as we begin to open up our community smartly. Visit Manhattan would like to say thank you for being strong. Thank you to our community, to our hospitality industry, and especially to our visitors. We do indeed have a bright future. Now, who has the first questions for us?
I do.
Commissioner Hattasal here.
Yes.
When Bernie started out, he said the transient guest tax collection was 229,000, which was $100,000 less than 1999 last year or predictions for this year?
Not predictions. And can I get back to have Bernie on here as well? But it, what he was referring to is the first check that we received from the city for our first quarter. And it's about $100,000 less than what we received last year.
Okay. We already budgeted less for this year. So compared to our budgeted TGT tax, any ideas how close it was to what we were expecting our decreased amount to be?
I, I think we budgeted the same amount. We kept everything level.
Okay.
Not knowing what we were going to have. So, you know, one of the things that we'll need to visit is that part of the American Rescue Plan Act is that we will have the ability to use some of those funds to make up for our shortfall, shortfalls using 2019 actual revenues compared to 2020. So I think we finished somewhere around $500,000 to $600,000 short in '20. What we don't know is whether that's going to repeat for '21.
But that's what you planned on. So if we have a good second quarter, we could have more transient guest tax than you predicted according to the budget.
Sure.
Because we'll be, you'll still be comparing that to last year's summer or second quarter, which was crap.
Right.
Okay, okay, okay. That's what I wanted to know. It's less than last year, but first quarter of last year was okay still for the most part. Got it. Next question. The Hampton, I heard on the radio, is not planning on rebuilding. If that's the plan, they're just going to demo it and call it good. So, all right, so those are gone forever. Last question was... Where did I write it down? If it's important, I'll come back to it.
Okay. I'll be here. Other questions?
I know Marcia is working hard to market the sporting events. One, one thing that comes to mind, and I'm curious about if there's been any discussion beyond the Kansas City areas, that they're, they're competing to get a World Cup in 2026. And there could be, as those things go, hosting of teams and peripheral games and things. I was just wondering, there's some excitement around the World Cup in the Kansas City. If that's been something that's gotten this far on our radar, or maybe we can look into it?
To my knowledge, I'm not aware of that. But that certainly Marcia is the one that is having those conversations. And certainly, sports planners are just exactly like meeting planners. Their itinerary is already set for 2021. They're looking for '22, '23, and beyond and what are, what are our offerings? And so she's on that, but I'm not aware of, of those conversations being, being yet. So yeah, we'll keep you posted.
Yeah. And thank you Karen for the updates and all. I think that most of the hospitality, well, all of the hospitality industry has been greatly impacted by COVID. And hopefully, the American Rescue Plan does help. And hopefully, the American Rescue Plan does help in that area. And as people start to get vaccinated and come out a little bit more and enjoy sporting activities, I'm glad Marcia is working on the sports component of this because, like we mentioned earlier, the two recreation centers, that was the fundamental revenue source that we were counting on. So our taxpayers in our community don't have to pick up that tab. So, and that's what I thought, that most of them would be planning out a couple of years, much like other ones. So I would like more updates about those things, how they're happening, even if it's not just sports in our traditional manner. But even like I was mentioning, gaming is huge now, video games and such, chess competitions, gymnastics, all kinds of things, and even small art competitions. And I don't know, we used to have the Wheat Festival, Wheat Bread Festival, if they're planning on coming back. But some of those things, that now we have more facilities, not just the Conference Center, but there are more of them for us to have indoor and outdoor activities, not just as a matter of physical competition, but just art, fine arts competition, whatever it might be. So I want us to look at beyond just sports, but everything that there is out there because we also want to be that hub for innovative thinking and innovative competition in addition to the traditional competitions.
Those are great comments and observations. And I'll just address on the, this is the year for the Kansas Wheat to hold the Kansas, the National Festival of Breads. That event, as you all recall, has been held here at our Conference Center where they bring in those contestants. This year, they planned this last year, that that would be virtual. So it will be a virtual competition, still being centered in Manhattan, Kansas. But that's such a specific amateur bread-making competition, if you wish, that they felt that for it to be able, they, meaning Kansas Wheat, is that they're able to reach a larger audience by it being held virtually. I have not had a conversation with Kansas Wheat for several months, that there was discussion at one point in time of bringing in the final finalists to Kansas, but not to have, as we had about 800 people that came to the Conference Center in years past. Again, keeping in mind, we're still a ways from being totally open. We're still a ways from seeing meetings being back to normal. We're now looking at probably fourth quarter when we really have meetings that, as we have known them, we really look to '22, '23 before that really comes back. So it's very important that we, as we gather together, whether it is for an event, whether it's a sporting competition or an event where we're learning from one another, or it's a meeting, that it is done smartly and wisely. And so, and we're beginning to see that. We're keeping a hand on that as to how that happens.
Yeah, I know the State Chiropractic Convention is happening in Olathe in a couple of weeks. And instead of being a two-and-a-half-day, 16-hour continuing ed thing, it's a Saturday-only, eight hours. Sit for four hours, have some lunch, sit some more, and then get out of here.
Right.
And so they're trying to have something in person, but limitedly in person. And so it's, I suspect there's a lot of other organizations that are doing something on a scaled-back basis like that.
Exactly, exactly.
I thought of the other thing.
Sure.
That is a beautiful, nice west window looking out onto the world from the new addition of the Conference Center. Is there any plan to do anything with that green space so they're not looking out over the oil change and that semi-dumpy house that's across the street? Is there, did you ever talk about trying to do any kind of a, like an out? You could, I don't know what you could do. It's some nice grass you got there. And I'm not sure if you could build a little wall around it to sort of separate people walking on the street from it to make it a semi-cozy, like a couple-foot wall, something. But it'd look like that would be a nice place to be outside. But looking out there, out the window at that, I saw the cars driving by and those houses and the oil change place. Is there, are they saving that green space for another potential expansion someday? Or has anybody thought that it would be nice to put something nifty, like maybe a water feature and a plaza thing out there?
Well, if we're talking the same, and I don't have a map here, the Conference Center goes clear to the sidewalk now, the expansion, to the west.
Okay, it does?
So, yeah, it goes, there's...
No green space?
No green space.
There's no green space.
I have a depth perception problem, apparently.
Yeah, there's no, there's no green space.
There's nothing. So there, people are looking out on the sidewalk and the street.
Yes, yes. And also, you know, in August, it gets a little warm. And if you're in that meeting room, one of the challenges that they have had is sun-blocking blinds. So they have those in there. As you recall, when the Conference Center first came online and we utilized that east space, again, if you're an early morning riser like I am and you're there for, at 8:00 meeting, registration starts at 7:30, depending on the time of the year, that sun can be blinding. So the Conference Center, as they did that expansion, tried to address both of those, east, west, just the way that it is. It's set and designed. But there's not any space to do anything else on that west end.
So disregard my comment.
You're... We'll do a tour.
I'd just like to say that I'm enthusiastic about the additional space at the Conference Center and encouraged about the sizes, the additional, what, that we'll be able to attract larger conferences.
Yes.
And that has been a need. We've been missing out on that 500 to 800 or 1,000 range. And so I'm really encouraged. So, and I like the space and it's beautiful.
They're just anxious, as we are, to be able to show it in its full capacity.
Exactly.
I was just going to say, thank you for your technology updates and the video and the presentation. I think that does go a long ways. People really write that off, but it is important for attraction. And the website update is really awesome.
Thank you. I do have one small, I shared this with our entire team today, the CBB Communications Team today. Small Market Meetings, another meeting publication, had interviewed me last week for Tell Us What's Happening in Manhattan with Your Meetings. And it was a great conversation because the woman that was conducting the interview said, "I've been all over your website." And she said, "I literally am on hundreds of websites throughout." And she said, "The questions that I have to ask you now are more, tell me more about Manhattan, Kansas, and why I really want to meet there because your website was so detailed with meeting information and overview." She said, "I can't wait to come to see your community." So I thought that was a job well done. Again, as we talked about the Conference Center in 2020 being completed, not having to move any meetings during that time, the same can be said for us. Our team was able, as we worked from home and didn't have meetings that we were working with, we were able to really spend time on that website that we would have still spent time, but we didn't have dedicated time like we've had. So we see positive things as a result of that. So I thought it was important for you to share what a total outsider has seen as they're utilizing our website as a resource. So we're pleased with that very much, so.
Okay, I hope we're successful in getting some of those marketing sports things in because we've got a new venue there.
Yes.
And I think, you know, if the vaccine program continues on track and we get rid of these face coverings, that you'll be able to capitalize on that material and things. So looking forward to seeing things get going here by the fourth quarter. And also, you didn't highlight your event calendar.
Ah, we did it really quickly in that, in our website thing. But again, the event calendar, thank you for mentioning that. The event calendar is not only easy for you to go on and see all that is happening, and we are thrilled that it's now more robust than it was. But if you, as a resident of the community, have an event that you want to add on there, it is very easy for you to be able, it says, "Submit an Event." You go through and fill it in, and you don't have to wait on us to do that. So as you spend time on there, that is very, very simple to do.
And that's come a long ways. I think Mike Dodson, when he was here, you know, tried to push that. And we finally got it through after he left. And a lot of people have done some work on there trying to make us the Christmas destination, which Karen's done a lot of work on, and tried to just tie all those events together so you can go look at that calendar and say, "Wow, look at all the cool things you could do in Manhattan, Kansas, from November to January, the New Year's." And I think that's going to help us grow up some business too. So I appreciate all the work on that.
I bet.
So excellent.
I remembered my last question. Has Farm Bureau decided if they're going to have their thing in person yet? Because that's usually in June.
It's in December. Really? Farm Bureau is in December.
The big one, where they bring all their agents and everybody from, okay.
Well, are you talking about agents? Or are you talking about the farm organization? Kansas Farm Bureau, the farm organization?
The one that they used to have up at the Student Union because that was the biggest facility.
Yes, yes.
When is that?
That's in the December timeframe.
And that's the one they've kind of committed to having here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So they're back on board?
Yeah, we're working with them to secure all of their hotel contracts this week. So they're on board with being back in person fourth quarter.
Very good.
Yes.
I'm really glad to hear about the calendar because there have been times when I knew a conference was coming here. But if it wasn't coordinated by your office, it wouldn't be on your Chamber website. And I, you know, at the time, I was, if you don't use the exact right words, you can, you can spend a lot of time trying to find something.
Right.
It used to be worse than it is now. But, so that's a great, great, I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, appreciate the briefing. Excellent. We have no vote on this because it's just a, you know, there's no possible motion. So keep up the good work. And we'll be looking forward to seeing business improve here over the next couple of quarters.
Thank you. It takes a team. Thank you very much.
So now we need to go back to two items that were moved from the consent agenda. The first of those being item H1, which is the appointment of Ben Burton to the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board. And I believe Commissioner Morris, you had a comment about that.
Yes, I did. I'm going to be voting no again on this one. Not so much against the individual because I have no reason. We have had construction company representatives and owners in the past. But I object to an all-male board. We're in the year 2021. We have plenty of qualified women in this community. And so this is just my way of saying, pay attention to the fact that we're not appointing women and minorities to some of these boards. So just, that's my, that's what I wanted to say about that.
I just want to add to that, that Shelley Carver, I had appointed her last year, and she was finishing off somebody else's term. And she was interested in being reappointed. And typically, even when I was mayor, we, I tried to reappoint people that were still interested because it's so hard to find people to serve on any of our boards. And by then, they've had enough experience that they chose to do it again. And now we don't have to try to get people to do, be on our boards. So since she had the background and she did serve on it and she was interested, I didn't see a reason not to have her appointed back to the board. And she's still interested in being reappointed. So I wasn't sure if there was a reason not to have her appointed or I don't, I don't know the thought process that went into not reappointing her when she was interested. So I just wanted clarification on that. I have nothing against the appointee that is recommended. But I just felt like because she wanted to be reappointed, that balance is, needs to be there on our boards, especially if there was that option for someone who wanted to be reappointed, who was doing a fairly decent job and was interested in serving again.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I can answer that one. You know, when I look at who's on boards, I don't go through and add up how many men are women because I don't point, appoint based on gender. So I don't see a problem if a board is all women or it's all men. That's just not an issue with me. And I know some people may go through and look at that, so that's not it. I do like to put in different people on the board so that we have more citizens involved rather than the same people getting reappointed all the time. And one of the things I find interesting, especially on this board, is when you have developers or somebody that worked in it, they've gone through all the hoops, so they've got a different perspective. And in the case of Ben, as he recently, you know, worked on, I guess, the Community House project, he had to go through a lot of hurdles, especially the historic board and things like that. So I thought here was an opportunity, when I saw him volunteer for that, to get involved in there. And I think he brings a whole lot to the board. I think he's present today if he'd like to speak. Can do so.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner.
Come up to the other ones. That one's not for them.
Oh, thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your consideration. Serving on an advisory board is certainly a unique and positive opportunity for citizens here in Manhattan. I applied. I felt that my experience in real estate, working with city government, city staff, renters, developers, would provide a unique opportunity or unique perspective to the board. That would be a positive. In terms of if there's ever a concern with conflicts of interest, certainly would recuse myself if there was ever that issue. We have that on boards now. And all our board members are professionals. And we should expect that they're professional. I'd certainly be the same in that regard. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Sure, like I said, it has nothing to do with the individual. Shelley Carver was part of the Flint Hills Regional Council. And she had, the reason I had appointed her is because of her knowledge of Manhattan. Like you said, not just because she's a woman. So as far as her qualifications, being on the Manhattan Regional Council, understanding not only the city of Manhattan, but the relationship we have with the broader, larger, greater community, you know, inside and outside of Manhattan, which is very important when we make decisions about zoning or plaids or developing or whatever it might be. And she did, like I said, finish off somebody else's term. So it's not like she's been there for years. She's only been there months. And, you know, she enjoyed it enough to say, "Yes, I would like to be reappointed." There's always option not to say yes. You don't have to be reappointed. In fact, some people on boards have served for decades, with or without experience of anything to do with what they're on. But we've never really questioned the other ones that have served for decades. We are questioning somebody who does have an interest, who has served on it, who has experience in development, plating, zoning, because part of her background is in that and she continues to have an interest in that. So I felt like there wasn't a reason to remove her and appoint somebody else. I have nothing against the individual. I just didn't feel it was necessary for her to be removed.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. That's good dialogue. But, you know, looking at the qualifications, I just, you know, my judgment was a little bit different on that. So at that point, I guess we can take a vote on this.
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Item H1.
Second, is it Consent Agenda or do we say General?
It's just, it is Consent Agenda.
The Consent Agenda Item, which has been moved to the General Agenda, we want to take this up separately because I haven't heard anybody talk about, yeah. So H1, the Appointment to the Urban Area Planning Board.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Commissioner Estebroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
No.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
No.
Commissioner Hattasal?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay, and then the last item on the agenda tonight is Item H3, which was moved from the Consent Agenda, which is Appointment of Brad Klosman to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. And I believe Commissioner Estebroth.
Yes, I asked for that to be moved, and I'm going to recuse myself. And that means I need to step out.
Step out?
You're supposed to leave.
I find that interesting because I don't, of course, I think you all know that Erin is running that. And we were having trouble filling these positions. In fact, we got one that's vacant. It has to be a resident. And that one hasn't been filled yet. And I did call the Manhattan Builders Association and talked to Brad Haverstein and said, "Hey, you know, can you maybe search around and see if there's somebody there?" And the reason I thought somebody from that organization would be good is because we had all that trouble with the tower and the mold and rebuilding. And I think we ended up having to kick in a million dollars. The city had to backstep. And you're on that board and you know the deal.
It was a loan.
And of course, most... And of course, most of us know Brad Klaassen quite well, because, of course, he was our head code guy. And so I thought, well, he would bring some expertise that I don't think anybody else would ever have, dealing with the city and whatever, and that's why I put him on there, so I'm not really sure why Erin would want to pull that off of there.
Yeah, well, there might have been, he's the one who pulled it off, but it might have been an easier way to do that than just say he recused himself from Item H3.
Yeah.
So going forward, we might need to talk, if there's some concern about him sitting out to vote on something, there may be an easier way to do it than pulling off to the end of the agenda.
Because if that's the only reason he pulled it off, does anybody else have an issue with Brad being...
No, that was it. So I move that we approve Consent Item Agenda H3.
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, we have a...
Comment, please, comment. Yes, that would be nice.
Feel free, go ahead.
Yeah. I do support the appointment of Brad Klaassen. I think he has served the city well, and I believe this is an area that he is an expert in. I don't know, you know, the, it's not ordinary that a code inspector expert be on the Manhattan Housing Authority. They have, HUD has a housing inspection program that's their own, and you got to follow it or else, so, but anyway, I think he's an excellent suggestion. And I would point out that there are seven members on that board, six are women, so Brad is a welcome diverse, adding diversity to that board. And Phil Anderson served so well, and his expertise was something else, but he was involved in construction and renovation also on a much smaller scale, and a different than Brad. But just to say that I certainly support Brad's nomination.
Okay, excellent point there, Linda. So City Clerk, we have a motion and a second, so if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, and that would be the last item on the agenda, so on that note, we adjourn. Thank you.